Thursday, November 7th, Town Council Work Session Meeting. We have everybody here except for John Covington.
Chanel.
Chanel, thank you. And India, I guess if you want to start things off with VDOT, I believe, or whatever else you want to talk about, come first?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. At the request of Councilman Hagman here, we have an update from Mr. Bates from VDOT. Just giving a general update on projects in the town and we'll be here to answer any questions that you all may have.
Yep, alright, can you all hear me alright? Is that good? Cool, alright, thanks, yeah, I don't have any specific presentation. When I was here previously, we talked a lot about 301 and Chase Street. That's all moving swimmingly at this point. But I know we may have some new faces out here. You know, I was really just going to kind of do an introduction and talk a little bit about what the VDOT folks here at the residency, a little bit about what we do and how we're involved in the community and some of the, you know, the areas around, not just the town of Bowling Green, but Caroline County. So again, Kyle Bates, if you all didn't know me already, but we, I'm the Resident Engineer for the Fredericksburg Residency. So I've been doing this for about 11 years now in the residency. We, we have a staff of about 130 or so employees. And what we do with those employees is a lot of the maintenance aspect of things and then the land development. So I kind of have two wings of the residency. One is related to maintaining your roads. It's the staff that you see out every day, patching your potholes, mowing your grass. Some of that is, I have some, a lot of contracts. We do, we do some things with state forces, but then we also, just because it doesn't say VDOT, doesn't mean it's not us. We do have a contract office where I'm fortunate in that this past year I was able to fully do all of our mowing with contracts, which was fantastic for VDOT, because that allows us to go out and do some of the other things that are a little bit more pressing, drainage concerns and pipes and stuff like that. So obviously with the maintenance side, there's a lot of pressing needs. We really try and put a plan together, stay focused on that plan. I get, we get a lot of work orders, a lot of requests. Some of them are very pressing, some of them are not, and that's okay. We still want to hear about those, but we put that, those into our plan and we will work our plan accordingly. It's really important for me, and one thing I've strived to do over the last decade or so, is make sure that my team has the ability to work their plan. If I'm pulling my superintendent in Caroline County from one side of the county, then to the other side of the county, that's not working your plan, that's not efficient. And frankly, everything is falling further and further behind while that's happening. So you all saw, we did a lot of work on sidewalks. It was about three years in a row, I believe, where we had different sections depending on severity and depending on the area in which they were in the town. Where we almost, for three years straight, we, we invested a pretty significant amount of money trying to, to work that plan. So that's a good example of, you know, you might not see us out every other day repairing a sidewalk, but when we have enough, we come in and we, we will fix it. Same thing now, we may, we may look at trip hazards, so we may alleviate those immediately. We could end up with, you know, gravel or asphalt in place of what used to be a concrete sidewalk. We're always going to come back. The important thing for us, and this is not just with sidewalks, but potholes and everything else that we maintain, is alleviate the immediate safety hazard. That doesn't mean we won't be back, like I said. So we may patch a pothole with cold patch, but the road might be on the resurfacing schedule in the next year to two years. So it's really important we hold our investments over so that we can come back and correct it at the right time. On the other side of that, I have a land use staff of roughly 10 to 15 employees. These land use folks, this is the part of the residency that not a lot of people see. We're constantly meeting with county staff, looking at new plans. So anybody that wants to be in the state road or connect to a state road has to get a permit, right? Even the county, so the county has to go work on their water line. They have to get a permit from VDOT. If their VDOT is within, if their, their line is within the right of way. Not a lot of people realize that. So anybody that's out on these state roads out here, if they're not VDOT or they're not a VDOT contractor, they should have a permit. So not a lot of people know that, just keep that in mind. So if you see somebody doing something silly, that doesn't, that looks unsafe, they probably don't have a permit. And that's where a quick call to me, I have, like I said, I got about 15 employees. I have a permit inspector that their sole job in Caroline is to review existing permits and then look at things that are not permitted within the right of way. So I need to know those things. What I tell people a lot of times is if I don't know that there's a problem, I can't fix it. So when you talk about people being in the right of way, I need that call. Happens a lot. We had a gas line breakup in Stafford yesterday on Route 1. We had to close all of Route 1 in Stafford County. They have to get a permit to come out and fix that. So, and we inspect it and make sure that it's built right. New subdivisions coming in to the system, we review those. We have our, not only do we review the plans, but we have permit inspectors that are out on site when some of those critical path things are happening. Make sure that we get the product that we need to maintain it long-term, right? It's important, I mean, if you're ordering a new refrigerator at your house and you're paying for that new product, if you get it there and it's got dents and scratches all over it from Best Buy, that probably wouldn't fly, right? We, we look at it the same way. If we're accepting a new road into our system, we want that new product. It's your taxpayer dollars that are paying to maintain it. So it's important from our perspective to make sure we get that product. So that's kind of the, the high level part of the residency. The only other thing I'll say in relation to that is we have our online system and it is phenomenal. You can go into VDOT, you can just Google, "report a road problem", and any of those things that you report, they don't go into like a black box in downtown Richmond. A lot of those work orders get routed directly to the local area headquarters, especially the maintenance ones. So if you say, oh, there's a pothole or there's a drainage concern, those work orders, you can call 1-800-4-Road or you can go into the "report a road problem" on our website. They go directly to the folks in the Ladysmith and the Farmers Area Headquarters just down the road. And they can assess, they can add that to their plan, they can call you back if you so desire. We've got a staff and we just hired a new superintendent within the last year to two years. His name's Calvin Madison, he's phenomenal. He's very easy to talk to, he loves talking to citizens, he goes out, he'll meet you on site. He, he's got a lot of good things going. So that is not a black hole. If you don't get an answer, there's usually a reason and that's something that we can look into. But that is a system that has worked for us. So I would just encourage, not just for you all, but I know that you get a lot of people calling you with questions, given your capacity in the town, right? So as you get that, that's an excellent tool to pass on to other folks. Call 1-800-4-Road for the issues or go onto the website and report a road problem. Goes to us directly, which is very helpful for us to plan our work, right? It would be a real shame if we come in to do drainage complaints and then we skipped one or didn't, because we didn't know about it because a work order didn't get put into our system. So it's a very, it's a, it's an excellent tool when used appropriately. So those are kind of the big, the sides of the residency that we use. The other thing, you know, we have a whole staff of people outside of the residency at VDOT, right? I'm just one entity, I deal with the public. You know, I'm the one at the board meetings, I'm here tonight. You know, we do work a lot with the constituents, we're the front lines of VDOT, if you will. The, for better or worse, the face. But also, there's a lot of people at our district office that do a lot of really good things. They're the ones designing bridges, they're the ones designing what asphalt mix is going down on the road. They're the ones that are, you know, project managing these projects. They're surveying, they're doing all kinds of, you know, working on equipment, a lot of behind the scenes stuff that really, not to be too cheesy, but keep, keep us moving, keep Virginia moving. So those, that's a very important role. You know, I know one of the topics that comes up often is how do I get a project, right? I, I want to fix this safety issue or there's congestion or what have you. There are so many different ways to get funding for a project. They all take a lot of forethought, depending on what the project is. So the 301 Chase Street, that, that's an example of one that went through what we call smart scale. That's one of, again, very many avenues you can go into to try and get awarded funding for a project. It's our biggest pot of money. It's essentially, you put an application in, it goes into a giant benefit cost analysis for the entire state and that's how the state decides where that funding goes. 301 Chase Street was one of the highest rated projects that round. I think it really rated highly because of the safety aspect related to the crossovers on 301 and some of the pedestrian accommodations and sidewalks and things like that within the town. That all scores excellently, especially when you look at the cost. There's not a, at least from, from the perspective of preliminary engineering, there's not a significant cost for right of way. A lot of, you know, all of the improvements on 301, for instance, can happen within the existing right of way. We don't have to go through a negotiation process to acquire that. So that's, that's a big plus when you're looking at why that, that scored as well as it did. So there's a revenue sharing that's on odd years. That's another application process where it's a 50/50 cash match. So if the county puts in a million dollars, they have, they stand to get a million dollars through the revenue sharing program. So smart scale and revenue sharing are definitely our biggest, but there's also programs with federal funding for safety funds and we have the secondary six-year plan that we do every year through Caroline County. That's where VDOT takes some of the tele fees that we get. People don't often realize this, but you know, Verizon, if they want to put something within our right of way, they're paying for that. So we take that money and we dish that back out through the secondary six-year plan. There's a formula depending on your population and, and lane miles. And that gets dished out to the localities and they get to decide how that money is spent. It can only be used on secondary roads, but that, we do that every year with every single locality throughout the state. So we, we're getting ready to do that this winter for the spring secondary six-year plan. There's a public hearing, you can go to the county and you can say, hey, this is what I'd like that money to be spent on. I like the plan, I don't like the plan, and go from there. So that's just a few of the ways that you can get awarded funding and projects. Like I said, that is how 301 and Chase Street was funded. The Ladysmith Road Project, that's how that was funded. That was the very first round of smart scale and that project's now completed. Actually, I think when that one was applied, it wasn't even called smart scale, it was House Bill 2. So that's how old that one was. It is a lengthy process. You apply for a project, you wait six months, find out if you get awarded that funding. Six months later, it gets allocated into the, the six-year improvement plan and then it gets funded over those six years. Sometimes that money is on the outer years and that's when you have to, you have to have all the money to go to construction. You can't, you know, you can't go to construction before you have the entire thing. So there is some work that we usually get started on. So like while the money on 301 Chase Street isn't all allocated this year, we have enough money to get started on the preliminary engineering. So that's what you all saw, we were out there doing a lot of the survey work. That's now complete. So now we're at the, the stage in that project where we're looking at that, that survey that we got back. We're seeing what kind of utility conflicts we may have, what the impacts could be to right of way. That's kind of what we're doing right now. We just finished that survey, we're now analyzing that data and having some internal meetings on, on where that's going to go next and what kind of impacts that's going to have. I did stand here back last November, December. You know, there, we obviously had a big concern statewide about inflation. The state was able to step in, this was one of the projects that we were covering the inflation. So if you recall, that budget went up from about 11.8, if I recall, to just over 14 million. That was being fully covered by, by the state. So we don't have to go back to the town or the county to acquire more funding for, for the project. So, but that's kind of just a general overview of what we do at the residency. My office is typically at 86 Deacon Road in South Stafford. But I'm down here all the time. I may have told you this before, but my father was the, the district administrator, I think is what his title was. District Engineer at Rappahannock Electric Co-op years back. So he used to, he used to come as a kid and he dressed up as Santa and got up in the bucket truck, which I always, always enjoyed and, but yeah, I've been coming to Bowling Green since I was a, a young kid. But anyways, look, I know you all probably have some things for me. I can answer some questions, I can take concerns. If I don't have the answer tonight, I will certainly do my research and loop back around to you.
Kyle, where are we at in the six-year term of the thing? How, when, when would the, maybe the construction start around here?
For the 301 Chase Street project? I'm looking at-
Let's, let me verify it. I know it's going to happen on the road, but I get citizens that ask me about the sidewalk going down Chase Street to that subdivision. That's what I get asked about. When, when, when would that happen in the phase?
Yeah.
At the end?
Yes, absolutely. So we would have to advertise the project altogether. I mean, you know, even outside of that, just selfishly, like we have crash data that supports this project, especially at the crossovers at 301 there. I, you know, the, the mayor and I were talking while back. I would, I would love to, to be able to do that work ahead of the project, but I can't, I can't do this thing piece by piece, right? Then you're looking at having multiple advertisements for the project and the budget could be busted, right? So we have to advertise it all at once, it is all one bundled project together. So you are looking at the end, when we, once we go through design, there's going to be a public hearing, right? Like at, at a certain point, you get to 30 to 60% design. We have a public hearing, we usually bring in all the folks, we'll do it somewhere in this vicinity. Maybe we'll do it right here in this, in this room, if y'all will let me, we'll talk about that. But you know, it, it'd be a good opportunity to hear a lot of feedback from the, the citizens. You know, and then, I mean, you're still years out from being finished with design. So I mean, I, without having the schedule right here in front of me, I'd say you're three to four years out from contract advertisement, at which point it gets awarded. Construction, you know, depending on what the things are that have to happen in relation to the signal and the utilities. I mean, I wouldn't think more than a year to a year and a half. It's not a substantial roadway project, it's small items. Good news is that there won't be a lot of disruption in traffic during that time. So did, did that answer your-
Yes. Another thing I got, the alleys on Main Street that we were thinking about maybe doing away with, we're still in this decision if we want to do that. But that one alley right next to my hardware store where the curbs are busted really bad and there's holes or bad trip hazards, can anything be done about that sooner than three to four years? Because I mean, those two curbs on both sides of that alley are really messed up.
Yeah, if I recall, we were talking about, yeah, that's right. You said you were looking at closing that, that and, and just curb and guttering that off. Look, the, the answer is, right now you have an entrance there, correct?
Yes.
And VDOT has to maintain that sidewalk. So if there is a trip hazard, if there's something that needs to be taken care of, we can address that, right? Now, we, it may be something where we, it may be a temporary fix until we come back and we have a contractor come in and do it the right way, but-
Yeah, the sidewalk's fine, it's like the curb on that apron that goes up there, those chunks of that curb are completely broken out of there.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's, it's pretty bad.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think I brought, brought to Calvin's attention a couple of times too. And I think we even met with Calvin out there at one time, take a look at it. But yeah, it's, it's really a bad trip hazard. It's, you know, you know how the curb comes off of the street and then it rolls around on the side, you know, like the entrance? It's all busted up.
Yeah.
It's just a hole that's missing, it's gone.
And we're getting a lot of more young couples moving in, like in Brookwood just south here, and they do a lot of walking and they have trouble with the baby straws going over that all the time.
Young people in the walking, dude. Okay, yep, let me, let me get with Calvin on it. Honestly, he, he might have a plan for it already, I just need to be privy to that, so.
There's three locations in town, if I'm correct on it, maybe four, but I think three. Guardrails, when are we going to fix the guardrails? They've been, some have been there two years, messed up.
So-
I got one at East Broadest in the medium. I got one on West Broadest Street where the tree came down a year ago and smashed and still got two barrels sitting there. Then we got one down on West Broadest at the crossover at 207 where we got cones. It just looks terrible, you know, in our town. And they've been there and been there and been there.
Oh, I roughly, not holding you to this, but how, how long have they been, been like that?
One to two years.
One to two years, okay.
The one that was on 207 here where that Humvee flipped over.
Yeah.
They came and fixed that one. But then they went right on and forgot the other ones and just-
Yep, okay. So I'll talk holistically to it and I'll tell you what I'm going to do. We have to rate all of the guardrail hits, right? In terminals are typically the highest priority. They're blunt objects if they're not, if they don't have an in terminal, right? You're, you're looking at, dare I say, a spear, if you don't have an in terminal to appropriately take the impact of a vehicle. So that is the, the highest of high priority. Some of the runs of guardrail, I'm not going to lie to you, they get pushed to the back. So they don't hit the priority list when you're talking about the in terminals. So what I can do, I, I've seen, this is not the first time I've gotten this concern. It's something I can follow up with those specific sites that you gave me. I can at least let them know, there may be a world where they don't have that on their radar. Just because you see a cone out there, that could have come, maybe it came from the area headquarters, maybe it came from somebody else, right? So I can follow up, make sure they've got that on their radar and see if they have a plan for that. I know the one, I know the one you're talking about when you're coming off of Chase Street, where you, I believe it's Chase Street, I don't think it's Courthouse. It's the one that's like right there in, in the, the radius of it. Yeah.
Even, even one of the supports is just totally out of the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, I mean, they just look terrible, you know, we got orange cones, you know, around our beautiful town and,
Yeah.
you know, on these messed up guardrails.
Yep, let me follow up on it and I'll, I'll get with you all and see if I can get a plan together.
Appreciate that, Kyle.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have anything for Kyle? Y'all go ahead.
What was your dad's name?
Ernie Bates.
Ernie Bates, yeah. I knew you did.
Did you?
So just curiosity, after a weather event, storm or snow or whatever, and a tree falls in the road, I've always wondered, VDOT comes through and saws it all. So they've got a lot of trees down.
Yeah.
They saw it all and I believe you looked at it, they saw it exactly at the level of the asphalt. Why don't they go back six feet and do it? Is that a law, they can't cut it?
No, 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 not at all. Yeah, it, it depends, okay? So if we are in a storm where we're just inundated, which frankly, haven't really had a lot of that here in the last year, two years, right? Probably not since January of '22, right? You have a storm which you're inundated, yeah, you're, you're getting the road open and you're moving on to the next thing. Because you've got to go from place to place to place. And every little bit you do more is taking more time and you've got people that are, are trapped and stuff.
And I get that.
But that's not what you're talking about.
A cut here at the road and a cut at the guardrail is one cut.
Yeah.
You know, I, I just, it's, it's frustrating sometimes because it happened recently in King George. I'm, I'm on the slow lane on 301 and literally I was afraid that it was going to take off my mirror, but it was cut off exactly at the asphalt.
Yeah.
And, and I, and I, to me, I said, I guarantee there was some training that your guys had that said, "Cut it off at the road, we'll come back later and get the rest." And to me, in private sector, "cut it off at the guardrail and just throw it over", you know, but-
For what it's worth, the last storm that we had, I was really bad, was we had one up in the Hartwood area of Stafford. It was legitimately, one of the texts to my area headquarters is, "make sure you don't have to go back and touch it twice." I would tell you that it's not a good practice to, to cut it at the road. The other part is, it's not always us cutting it. So we have run into issues and I'm not, I'm not trying to make an excuse because I have seen where some of our guys have done that. But there are occasions where, you know, maybe it's, you know, King George fire and rescue comes and that's what they do and we have to go back after the fact. So it, it's something that we preach with our guys. I would just ask you, if you see that, it goes back to that earlier comment, that 1-800-4-Road, they'll get out there and they'll correct it. Because we need to be cutting it back to the right of way. We have an issue where, you know, one, one side note is I actually met with some of the folks from Fort Walker the other day because we keep having these trees fall down within their area and then we're trying to mow and we can't mow because we have to go around these trees every so often. So we're going to work with them to identify some, some dead trees that look like they're about to fall and see if we can just take them out now. Because we don't want to run into that issue where I've got trees coming, at least encroaching on the road. But to your point, we should be taking it back. The only instance I can see where that's not the case is when you are absolutely inundated and we haven't had that here in quite a while, so.
Jeff?
Alrighty, a few, I'll try to be real quick. So you said you're like, on smart scale, you're like done with the engineering? Does that like include the sidewalks and the municipal lot and everything?
No, 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 we're, we're done with the survey.
Survey, okay.
We haven't even started with-
That makes more sense.
Plans quite yet, so.
Okay, cool.
We have to know where we can design them before we design them, if that makes sense.
Alright, cool. Alright, couple like specific ones real quick here. Just outside of town, but I was asked, do you have anything else to do at Farmer Drive intersection on 2?
Nope, that one should be all buttoned up. We realigned that, that intersection, that was a secondary six-year plan project that was prioritized by the county. We did that with state forces, that's, we'd finished that about six, eight months ago.
Okay, yeah, it's been a bit. You got any update from that, that county thing about, you know, redoing the, the turnover at the convenience site?
Yes, so there are two turn lanes that we were looking at. One was added through secondary six-year plan and the other, we were looking to identify some safety funding, one being the convenience site. That money is not available through the secondary six-year plan until, I believe it was next fiscal year, which I believe is '26. So we're still probably a year out from that one being, being constructed.
Alrighty. And slightly more complicated, the old Cape Seal project, that was six years ago now?
When?
No. When, when was that started?
That was, I left and went down to Chesterfield and it happened while I was gone and I was gone in 2020.
Okay, okay, alright. You know, there were a couple of spots that, that weren't done at that time, like Lakewood. Are those ever going to come back and be done or? And I, I forget exactly how long the Cape Seal's good for and when it would come back up to be done again anyway.
Send me the locations. It was my, if I recall and then pulling out of my memory here, but we tried to hit everything within the town that we could. If we miss like a certain road, I, I wonder, is it state maintained? That's, that would be my first question.
Alright, I, I'll get the, I was told Lakewood, there was one other and I don't remember the names, I'll get both and I'll, I'll get with you about that.
Yeah, please do.
And then lastly, I'll just, not to be lengthy on it, but like the whole speed thing, just because, you know, you're here. So, you know, you gotta be bugged about speed. As far as like, you know, timing and, and assessments and everything, how do you get to doing those assessments? I'll ask it that way. Do you just like, when the statistics get higher, you take a look at it? Or you do things every X amount of years where you like, you know, account how many vehicles are going by and stuff?
It's not how many vehicles are going by typically. So how VDOT, and then we, we pull this straight out of the, you know, National ASHTO. Like this is, this is how you, a lot of folks are doing these speed studies nationwide is, we look at what the, it's called the 85th percentile, right? So you can take 1,000 vehicles or you can take 10,000 vehicles. In the world of the 85th percentile, the answer shouldn't really change, right? So what, you, you take eight, with the 85th vehicle, if you were to take all of the speeds that these folks are going and you put them from lowest to highest, you look at that 85th vehicle, what is that person traveling, right? That average is typically what we use. Now, there's a lot of other things, just engineering judgment, right? Like we have to take into account a lot of other items, but you do not want to artificially lower a speed. And that's a, it's a really tough thing to, to grasp. But when I, I go through my subdivision, for example, like you could take, I know it's 25 because they're supposed to 25, but you could take that- but you could take that away. Um, not that I'm ever distracted, but sometimes I'm just driving and I look down and I see what I'm driving and I'm driving 20 to 23 miles an hour. Because, and I feel like even then, I'm like, I'm going a little too fast. It's because the width of the road, it's because, uh, there's houses, there's, you know, little Susie's playing with her puppy in the front yard. Like all of those things impact your, uh, you know, your thinking when you're driving. Same thing happens on 95. Like I could, someone told me one time that the, like the skip lines on 95, they're like, I think it's there like eight feet long. You would never think that just by like driving, but you're going 75 miles an hour, right? Um, you know, things are, you have a lot wider lanes, you have the ability to drive that fast, it's a straight line, right? Um, you don't wanna put the speed limit lower than what people actually want to drive because then you in turn create another unsafe situation. Um, we strive really hard to use that 85th percentile to make our engineering judgments as we're setting speeds. So we do speed studies. Um, so when we get requests, we'll look and say, okay, when was the last time we did a speed study? I don't think there's any like, we do it every three years or five years. We typically look, see, has anything significantly changed in the area? Is there a new development? Is there new, um, pedestrian draw, you know, something that's that's drawing pedestrians, uh, you know? And we can always look at doing that speed study, but more often than not, the speed data doesn't change unless there's something significant to change it, if that makes sense. So, uh, the 85th percentile is typically what we utilize. Um, but, um, if there's, I mean, we can look at it again at some point, I wouldn't wanna do it unnecessarily. I'd wanna see when the last time I did a speed study was. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, and I mean, look, I don't live here, okay? But I drive through here pretty often. Um, y'all don't wanna hear this, but especially when 95 is messed up. So I, right, um, but you can post a speed all day. Sometimes they aren't gonna go that. Uh, and a lot of question, the question we typically get is, uh, well, can you put speed bumps in? Can you do different speed, uh, something to to make people slow down? I don't wanna create an unsafe situation from that standpoint to that, and they are a maintenance headache for me. So I'm specifically talking about speed bumps. My plows would tear them apart. Um, but all that being said, that's where this, the radar signs came from, right? It's like, what are the things that we can do? I think enforcement plays a big, I know if if the chief was here, he'd be like, we do that. But, um, the unfortunate reality that we're we're, you all, you all feel it way more than I do is, it's not the same people, right? Uh, you know, you have a subdivision, it's easy, right? Even if it's a cut through, the people that are cutting through there typically, they're going from work to home and they do it every day. So you could fix those problems, right? Some education, some enforcement. Uh, the example I give, I went to to Patrick Henry High School and I lived in Beaver Dam. And when I came to Rockets Mill Road, there was this church there. And once a week, there was a sheriff's deputy sitting there. So you know what Kyle did, who was, you know, 16 years old? I slowed down when I got to that church, right? Because I just knew that that was gonna be happening, right? But I did that every day and I knew that. The problem we have here, down here in Bowling Green is these are not the same people. They are using this as a bypass because Waze and Google Maps told them to do it. Um, so that's where the speed display signs come into play. It's saying, hey, person that I don't know that is just coming through here once every two years or every year, just making you aware that this is the speed you're going, this is the speed you need to go. So, I mean, they are effective. I mean, I'll eat, I catch myself sometimes when I come into the town Bowling Green, find myself going a little too fast. Uh, and those those speed signs definitely draw draw my attention and remind me to, uh, obey the law. So, uh, I know I gave a very lengthy answer.
That was a nice detailed lengthy answer, thank you very much.
Now, uh, we gotta hurry up, but, uh, have y'all come up with the, uh, procedure since they passed the law to where towns can now set their limits, speed limits in town? Have y'all come up with that procedure yet?
Yep, I got it. I'll send it to you.
Okay, yeah, please do.
I will send it to India.
Yeah, send it to India because, uh, that way, you know, because I know Amari, you know, people wanna drop it, drop it, drop it. I mean, you know, we have the ability to do it now without y'all.
Correct.
And just like East Broadus, now we got more houses, we're 35 and need to drop to 25 when it gets into the residential area. So I mean, and stuff like that, okay? Yeah, send it to her, please, I appreciate it.
I do know.
And send it to the chief, too.
Yeah, okay. Um, I will tell you, I know that there's a lot of, you know, there's gotta be a resolution. It's got, a lot of it falls back on the locality and frankly, to the town. So you have to pay this to put the signs up, you gotta maintain them.
Right.
All the things.
Okay, all right, but it does give us ability to.
Depending on the road, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yep, I'll send that.
Anybody else, because we gotta be moving on with 20 minutes till our regular meeting, we still got a couple items to get to. That's all right, Kyle, you you don't come, but once every year it seems like.
Hey.
But, uh, I know we all got more questions, but, uh.
Look, you you know where I, call me.
No problem, man. Thanks for coming, Kyle, for, we really appreciate having you here.
Absolutely, no problem.
India, ready to move on to, uh, item number two?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
Be with the next slide. Thank you, um, we'll jump to the next one. Yeah. Um, so just bringing back the legislative, um, agenda packet for your consideration. At our last meeting, um, I discussed, uh, three priorities, um, that I think we should focus on for, um, this session. Um, as you know, we've already had at least one, uh, request with Congresswoman Spanberger's office. Um, so as far as this package goes, um, I'll touch on those three as a reminder again. Um, but just a reminder of our representatives, uh, at the state level, Senator Richard Stewart, uh, Delegate Hillary Pugh Kent. Um, and at the federal level, Senator Mark Warner, Senator Tim Kane, and the Congresswoman Abigail Spanberger. Next. She, she's. Yes. Yes. Yes, and I believe the the new congressperson elect is Vindman, I believe he's the one that that seat. So he'll be next, we'll be working with him in the future. Um, as I mentioned, um, requesting funding assistance with water system improvements on both collections and distribution. Um, we know that we have, um, some needs for, uh, wells in in the future, um, in accordance with our DEQ permits. Um, funding requests, assistance with sewer system improvement. Uh, we know that we have some challenges with sludge maintenance at our plant. And then the third item is just under regional partnerships, um, supporting Fort Walker, um, and helping them as a strategic partner. As our, as a strategic partner in our local and regional economy, um, to support them with more full-time and permanent National Guard operations. Um, so that's really it at a high level. As I mentioned before, um, as part of this process, uh, we would need a, need a resolution of adopted unanimously by town council. I would then distribute and follow up with legislators as required. Um, General Assembly Session begins in January of 2025. Um, I'll keep the town council apprised, go to the next slide, um, of any legislation that may impact the town of Bowling Green, um, throughout the process. And, um, I'll entertain any questions that you all may have.
So how often do we have to approve something like this?
I do do it annually.
Annually?
Yeah.
And have have we done it in the past?
I don't believe you all have ever done a legislative agenda, no. I will say, over my career, I think I've been successful in bringing over about $15 million to different localities. So my last one got about 5.7 from, um, Senator Stewart to help with watering sewer. So hopefully, um, it may not be this year because it is a budget amendment year, budget, year was last year. But in the future, I think if we have a plan as well as more detailed detailed CIPs and budgets, um, with actual costs, then I think we can be aligned to to get some additional resources. And we do have $400,000 in under the CPF process with Congresswoman Spanberger's office. But once I know more from, uh, her legislative aide on where that stands, I'll I'll brief you all.
Are you looking to get this done tonight?
Absolutely.
Do I have anybody who wants to, uh, make a motion to adopt this?
Uh, I can make that motion right now, Mr. Mayor.
Aye, sir. I've got it first by, uh, Mr. Boyd, I got a second by Ms. Valerie. Any discussions? Here or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Here and none, um, uh, motion passes 100%.
Thank you.
Item number three, back to you, India.
Sure. After. After our last meeting, um, we discussed, uh, the process, um, and we discussed, um, that I would provide you all with a draft evaluation, um, which I've done, um, and then walk through the process. Uh, have a draft here, give that to Mr. Gore. For, um, consideration, uh, be happy to discuss, um, it with you all. It outlines the evaluation timeline, um, some performance areas, uh, and then the alignment with the evaluation that, um, I sent you all previously, so.
So when do we pull the trigger on this and?
Um, I was asked to kind of draft the process, um, but it's really, really up to you all. Um, I think that you all will need some time to pull together, um, the evaluation documents. Um, I outlined that there, um, that I could submit, uh, self eval to council, um, by early January. You all would have till the end of January and then could discuss it in closed session in February.
So your contract calls for it first of the year or once a year or?
I think it says within the year with an option. Yeah. And so January would be the full, full year. I think it also says that we have to come to agreeable terms and I think in all fairness, giving me a full year, um, to self eval and then allow you all to eval as well, um, and then have that discussion in February would be most appropriate, so. And that either submittals would be provided to the attorney or a third party, so.
Third-party thing, should it be Jeff or should it be somebody?
It could be someone else. Um, the attorney and I are technically peers, so it's a little bit unorthodox to have attorney to run an eval on up here. Um, as a little bit different than most local governments, I've seen it outsourced to third parties, um, with with assistance.
Like a who, uh, someone higher?
Yeah, it could be someone that you you hire, whether or not that's a, uh, HR representative from Berkeley Group or some some other outside group like that.
Jeff, Jeff, Jeff might be a good one to, with the Berkeley Group down there or, uh, with the, uh, was it Washington Group? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it was an independent third party.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense, getting somebody like Berkeley. I would just get Berkeley involved and let them help us through that.
Sounds like.
How do we wanna do that?
Yeah, I mean, so so like timeframe, when should we locate that person and engage them and what do we tell them? The third person, the third third party, are they in on when we're sitting around giving you one through five or they?
No, you would submit it to them, they would handle all of that, put it in a report and then they would come ideally to, or zoom into that meeting and then discuss the the results collectively. So, but I can, I can shoot them an email, um, with, to see if they have a contact that could do it. Um, and then talk about the timeframe and then copy you all or.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
So y'all wanna move forward with this?
Uh, I love it, save one, one little.
Go right ahead, sir.
Um, uh, section six, uh, review meeting. Um, I don't think it's fully congruent with, uh, section two, uh, just where it says that the, um, eval results need to be provided at the end, no later than the first meeting in January. That's not really matching over in section two where it says submitted by January 31st. Um, but other than that, I really like what's what's here.
We change that to February.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I think it's pretty impressive you come up with this so quick and we never had anything like this to really evaluate our town managers. And to do it in a, in a, in a professional manner like this, uh, to me, it looks, it looked really good and I think council in the future will really appreciate it.
And I'll be doing the same with all staff. We actually had that conversation at ELT on Monday, so I think it's been maybe seven or eight years since some of your your staff have been evaluated. So kind of re-implementing that as a process as well, so we'll all be on the same page.
All right, so, uh, we just need to just have a consensus that, uh, this is what y'all wanna look at doing? Or do we need to make a motion to, uh, what, Jeff, how we gotta do this?
It's up to council, I mean, if there's consensus, I think that's fine.
Okay. All right, we got a consensus, uh, this is what we wanna look at going in the future, Valerie?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, well, we have it. Uh, good, I'm glad to see a process and and counsel, uh, for that and also with the, our employees' evaluation. Because you're right, we haven't had that and, you know, I know we sit here sometimes and we worry about how we're going and, uh, you've got some paperwork, documentation, paperwork here to go by now. Anything else, India, before we take a break?
No, sir.
All right, uh, we'll be back at seven o'clock. We got, uh, nine minutes. So, uh, y'all take a little break, we'll be back, thank you. I'll just turn it over, you want to get number six?
Okay, no sweat.
All right, if I can get everybody's attention, please, everybody. We can get going here. If we have anybody here that is wishing to participate in public comments. Hello? They can't hear me. Anybody out here who wishes to participate in public comments? If you wouldn't mind, please sign in over here on the table, uh, would be to your left. If you would, if you wish to participate in public comments, please, so we can keep this a little orderly. Thank you. Public hearing, okay, public hearing also. So if you're for the public hearing as well, please sign in. All right, good evening, folks. Glad to see a crowd out there. I'd like to call to order Thursday, November 7th, Town Council of Bowling Green. Uh, we do have a quorum, we have one member that is missing, Mr. Chenault. The meeting has been called to order. Uh, if I can have everybody please stand and follow me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Do we have to have this on? All right. We need to adopt the amendment, I mean, the agenda. We also have an amendment to the agenda. Mr. Gore, you want to read that, please? Right there.
Amendment for a closed session.
Yes, sir. Add it to the agenda?
I don't need to read it. That's the motion that we'll make when we go in.
Okay, all right. We need to add to the agenda, closed session. We will have a closed session meeting tonight.
And for consultation with.
For consultation with the legal staff?
Legal counsel and staff.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I, I move to accept the agenda as amended.
As it is and with the edit.
As amended with the closed session at the end.
I have a, a motion to have a second.
One, one clarification. In between number three and four, it says reconvening in open session. Is that a mistake?
It's, uh, yeah, should just, yeah.
Recognition? Okay.
Thank you for that out. I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second by Valerie. All in favor, aye. The agenda has been adopted, adapted. Item number one is a consent agenda with item number one, two, and three. Do I have a motion to accept the one through, one through three on the consent agenda?
Second.
I got it first by Jeff and second by Jean. Any discussion?
Just to say, just to anybody watching everything, that this does say that we are canceling the December meeting. Just to make sure everyone knows.
And all in favor say aye. All right. Moving down to item number four. Hey, India, you want to take that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have a proclamation for Mayor Mark Gaines and I will turn it over. Would you like to read it? Would you like me to read it? Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to the vice mayor to read it and then a brief presentation.
This is a proclamation for a resolution of appreciation for the Honorable Mark Gaines. Whereas the Honorable Mark Gaines has devoted eight years of service to the town of Bowling Green, demonstrating steadfast leadership and dedication to enhancing the quality of life for its residents. And whereas Mayor Gaines represented the town of Bowling Green on the Fort Walker Executive Steering Committee, building collaborative relationships with neighboring communities and strengthening intergovernmental partnerships to benefit the town and region. And whereas Mayor Gaines was instrumental in facilitating the intergovernmental support agreement with Fort, with Fort Walker, creating a mutually benefit arrangement that enabled the town of Bowling Green to assist with military contracting projects. And whereas under Mayor Gaines' leadership, collaborative agreements were developed to streamline communication and information sharing between the town's law enforcement and the county sheriff's department, enhancing public safety and response coordination. And whereas Mayor Gaines acted as the initial catalyst with his forward-thinking vision for revitalizing Bowling Green's historic and downtown district as a community heart and soul, promoting town pride, economic growth, and tourism by enacting the mobilizing Main Street initiative. And now therefore be it resolved by the Bowling Green Town Council that the town of Bowling Green expresses its profound appreciation to the Honorable Mayor Mark Gaines for his leadership and unwavering commitment to the well-being and progress of the town. And the citizens and leaders of Bowling Green extend their heartfelt gratitude to Mayor Gaines for his vision, dedication, and service, wishing him continued success in all further endeavors. This resolution is approved this seventh day of November, 2024, by the Town Council of the Town of Bowling Green, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. On behalf of the council and staff, we have a small plaque, a token of appreciation for your years of service and invite your family to come up to take a photo with you to celebrate your, your last meeting as mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Watch that chord, Tammy.
Do we need to do a motion to adopt this? Okay, so moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. I enjoyed serving this town, believe me. Uh, I'm getting out because I'm moving out of town. Other than that, I would have been glad to try to run again. I grew up in this town. I left it because at the time I was a teenager, there wasn't many jobs around here. And I thought I can get a better, better education up in Spotsylvania and the ability to work and that's what I did. You know, I had my vision. Uh, I came back here ten, ten years ago permanently. Not that I wasn't here off and on all the time. My mother was a big part of this town for many years and I stepped into her place. I come back to take care of her and to help rebuild this town, whether it was serving the government wise or privately. I, I love this town and always will. Just kind of moving outside of town doesn't mean I'm not going to stop trying to serve this town. I have been asked the possibility of running on planning commission. So I'm thinking about possibly doing that. So I'm not giving up on y'all. I am turning it over to a wonderful young lady who is here tonight, who is the mayor-elect, Tina Gamble. Stand up, please. She will give you another four wonderful years and with helping council to pull things together to keep this town running smoothly and efficiently as it should. So thank you very much.
Moving on to item number five, recognition of town council members. On behalf of staff, just like to recognize our town council members who were recently reelected. Councilman David Stork, Vice Mayor Valerie Coyle, Councilman Jeff Boyd, and Councilmember Dr. Chenault, who is not here with us tonight. But if you all could stand so the public knows who you all are and we'll give you a round of applause as well.
Oh, stand up. There you go.
And now turn it over to Vice Mayor for the next item, recognition of our Carolina County Public School International Teachers who are joining us here today.
There was an exchange program done with CCPS in reference to a teacher exchange. And we have been blessed with having eight teachers come here from the Philippines. They are living here in town on Main Street. And I'd like to have Ms. Latney come up, please, and introduce them if you may, so we can all meet our.
Don't look surprised, Ms. Latney.
Yeah, newest members to the town of Bowling Green and welcome them and we're happy to have them here.
Welcome, Ms. Latney.
Hello, everyone. You ready at all times, huh? So I'm excited on behalf of Carolina County Public Schools to announce our J-1 visa teachers. They are amazing. They are dedicated. They are excited to be here in Carolina to make sure our future leaders have the resources that they need. I cannot pronounce all their names, so I'm going to do that. So you still want to mess their names up? Oops, sorry. Alrighty, so I'm going to try to make sure it's right. They are like my sisters. We make sure they have the resources that they need as well while they're here in the town. They enjoy the Bowling Green Harvest Festival. That was their highlight, right? That was their highlight. They've never seen anything like that before, so they were super excited about that. So without further ado, Michelle Sibian, come on up. Catherine Sorrell, Lizzie Ruba, Donna Selezer.
Y'all come on down.
Come on down. Maureen Sapata, Murray Rose Aberdar, Alene Laxamana. Is that it? Did I forget anyone? And he mailed them. What, the great thing about it is I probably messed up all of their names, but y'all don't know it.
Yeah.
So these, these are our J-1 visa teachers. They are amazing. They're excited about our future leaders. They're so grateful to be in the town of Bowling Green. I have a quick story to tell. They decided to walk to the food line. They're like second week here and they sent me the video of it. It was their first time they're being here. They walked all the way to food line because they needed water. They walked there and then they drove the basket back all the way. They drove the basket back all the way to Main Street and to Broadus Avenue. And they shared with me, the students was waving out the window. I said, yeah, y'all probably went viral because the students was waving and like, that's my teacher. So the highlight was no matter where they are, they made sure they got what they needed. And from that interaction, we made sure that they have teachers and our coworkers have partnered. I've created a J-1 visa transportation sheet. So every Saturday, they have someone from the schools taking them to the grocery stores, to vision centers, to eat, to the international store. So we have embraced them here in Carolina and they have all the resources they need as far as transportation. And they are so happy and excited. Anybody want to say anything?
Thank you so much, especially CCPS. They are so really supportive to us, especially our needs here because we don't have anything here. They are here. So thank you so much. Thank you so much for having us here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just want to say to the town and to the council and I'll let Ms., um, the human resources, Ms. Paige Tucker speak. But they are really appreciative of being in the town of Bowling Green. They're excited. They go to the market every Saturday. They are super excited. So we thank you guys for just acknowledging them. They were super excited. They was like, the weather is crazy. We didn't know to wear a coat or wear whatever, but they, they look fabulous. And we just thank you guys for just acknowledging them. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Paige Tucker.
Yes, thank you guys so much. Very excited to honor our J-1 visa teachers. I just wanted to highlight, these are eight very educated, very senior teachers who have lots of experience in the classroom. So not only are our students at Caroline High School and Caroline Middle School learning so much from these master teachers, but our other teachers as well are learning so much. They are definitely masters in their field. And we just couldn't be thrilled, more thrilled to have them in Caroline County schools. So thank you guys for recognizing them tonight.
And before Ms. Latney leaves, I'd just like to give a special shout out and thanks to her as well for being just our point person for the pageant for our Harvest Festival. The kids really enjoyed it and thank you for your support for Caroline Promise as well.
I wanted to jump in before everybody sat down, but I, I just wanted to see if we could get everybody over here facing the camera so we could get everybody on the camera for everyone to see.
And which one of you are living on East Broadus? I know there's what, three or four of y'all living on East, four of them on Broadus?
The four of them on Broadus, bring your hands up. So four of them on Main Street.
Yeah, very good.
It's like the orange cable.
Now, Jason, Jason Mans, are you providing housing for all of them or just four of them? Just four of them on Broadus? Thank you. All right, that's, that's a tough one to, uh, to try to beat, but we'll, we'll try. Chief? We got staff reports and presentations. Item number seven, anybody have anything for the chief or chief have anything he'd like to say?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for, you know, leading everybody and doing a good job.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. That means a lot.
Yes.
Nobody have anything for them?
I mean, I'll, I'll just vouch, the chief worked really, really hard on Harvest Fest, as well as everyone else did on staff. But I just want to put that out there.
Thanks.
Well, the Harvest Festival turned out good and I know in our meetings that we've had with India since then, that staff really worked good on it. The sheriff's department worked with us, worked great on it, collaborate, collaborating with our chief. And our staff, the treasurer, really worked hard on making sure that we obtained our meals tax as we should, which helps us out as far as our revenue stream here. So I do like to thank you for that personally, because I know that's a day that you could be doing something else besides working. But it was great that you did that for us, you know. You're welcome.
It was definitely a team effort and everybody pulled through, so.
And the ground crew who kept the trash emptied and stuff. It was, I've never seen anything really overflowing. It was all really good. It was a great, you know, great event and India, thank you for your hard work for that. JC, you too. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody have anything on public works? Utilities?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
For the month of September, everything was pretty much business as usual. The biggest thing we had going on with the wastewater plant was the finishing up of the DO project that we had going for the wastewater plant to get the DO more managed throughout, especially through the night. That was a big success. We discharged an average of 90,000 gallons a day. The wells produced a average of 154,000 gallons per day. The managing the solids has, it, it's, it's made a big improvement on the wastewater plant. This, this, especially this month around, seeing a big increase in the type of biology that's in the plant. So that's, that's exciting. The commonuter had broken down. That was taken care of pretty swiftly with, everybody came together and got that taken care of. We got the we found that there was some grit that was coming in from the collection system that was taken care of in the influent channel. A lot of, a lot of things, just business as usual. We looked at some grease coming into the plant. We did a profile on the influent coming in. Everything seems pretty normal, a little bit of extra grease coming in, but we've had conversations about that. All of the sample results are less than QL, which is essentially, the test can't read that low. You can't, you can't detect it once it gets below a certain level. Outside of that, every, everything's pretty much business as usual. VDH, they asked for increased non-compliance sampling on well one, I believe is the outlier. One A and so we're doing that at, at their, what they've asked for. That's pretty much summed up. That's pretty much all I've got this month.
Anybody have any questions? And your name is?
My name is Jamie Sylvia.
Jamie, okay. I'm sorry. I almost called you Mark for a minute. Anybody have anything for Jamie? Thank you. Thank you.
I was going to hand it over to John Simmons, who's the C E O, C O O of the company.
Yes, sir, by all means.
Hello, everyone. I am John Simmons, the C O O with Emboden Environmental Services. I wanted to come tonight to introduce myself to you all. I've not yet been able to speak in front of you, give you a little bit of a history and update on the facility. You know, as Jamie said, things are going well. The plant's performing very well. You know, when the state that we had found the facility in, it was not operating as it should. You know, the, the, we had phylamenic bacteria that was inhibiting treatment there, you know? So we had to do a little bit of solids management. We had to get rid of the phylamenic in order to get the sludge settling properly. You know, that's things that we have, you know, dealt with, managed, moved on. So now the plant's operating well. You know, as Jamie said, they put some D O control items in there to better regulate the air, you know? So it keeps the solids from floating out of the plant. One thing that I want to talk with everyone tonight a little bit about, and you're going to be hearing more from us about it, you know, also, you know, India's involved, is what they call a fog program, fats, oils and grease. You know, you heard Jamie comment on the amount of grease coming into the facility and we did a profile there. But what we're seeing at the plant is during, you know, times of variation when the rotors are on, it's causing a lot of foam. A lot of grease is coming into the facility. Where that comes from is people cooking, pouring it down the drain, the restaurants, you know, industrial buildings, what have you. So part of a fog program gives you enforcement capabilities. It also has inspections for the restaurants to go in and check their grease traps and things to make sure they're operating properly. And it's also public education. You know, we want to educate the citizens on what to do with their grease when they're cooking. You know, years ago, people used to reuse their grease. They would cook with it and people would put it in the trash can. Now most people put it down the drain. So what we want to do is educate the public on the proper disposable of their cooking grease and things. So it does not come to the treatment plant. What happens when it comes to the treatment plant is it basically encapsulates the bacteria that does the treating. So if you, if your bacteria is encapsulated with grease, then it can't eat the food that the plant produces and how you treat the plant. So that's something we need to get under control. It's a problem that we've been, we've identified and we'll be working with India to institute a fog program. Obviously, the board will have to vote on that, but do we be expecting that sometime probably January? Would you say? So, you know, as we move forward, you know, that's something that we will bring to you for vote. But it's, it's very important that we get that established. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure meeting you and thanks for addressing, Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Community development and J C, you got something for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Chase Healer, Reverend, Director of Community Development and Partnerships. From the community development side of things, we'll be talking about short-term rentals later, so I'll leave that for when that item comes up. Compliance, currently collaborating with Department of Environmental Quality, sorry about that, D E Q, on the town's compliance review for our local Chesapeake Bay Act compliance program. And part of that, the extensive part of it that's taken a lot of staff time is we've had to assess historic files from construction projects that were actually completed and compile all of those documents, which have been very difficult to find and analyze. But I wanted to shout out our intern Jeffrey Smith has been great in helping us get some additional staff capacity and getting that done. As part of that, as we don't manage our own building processes, requested those documents from the county as well for those projects that have been identified. And once that, those packets are compiled, we'll be submitting that all to D E Q as the next step in the process. I'm also working with the U S Department of Education to verify the town's governmental status to ensure that current and future employees can take advantage of the federal government's public service loan forgiveness program, which is a pretty important recruiting tool for small towns that don't have maybe a lot of money to offer. But, you know, we should really be taking advantage of all the federal government programs we can. So thank you here for any questions.
I just have one quick question on the I X A program. Are there any projects in the wings?
The town manager and I have a meeting scheduled with the I X A team from Fort Walker for tomorrow. So hopefully it has answers in short order.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, J C. Finance Director and Treasurer, Tina, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, sir. You have my report. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Southern Software is on site, was on site today and will be on site tomorrow. We've installed it on all the computers and we're getting the database set up. We, I'm choking on my mint. Please leave that out of the minutes. I'm so sorry. We anticipated going live by the end of December. So we're still moving forward with that, that timeline. Just a couple of other things. We sent out your real estate tax bills and your personal property tax bills. And you'll be receiving your water bill here in about a week or so. So I apologize for hitting everyone with bills all at once. But outside of that, I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, moving on, town manager is important. You have anything you want to add, India?
Sure, I'll be brief. As you see in the packet, we're continuing our work on the F Y twenty-two audit process. I finalized some of the updates that we needed to get back to R F C A. Got those to them this week, so hopefully we'll see that process continue. We're targeting early twenty-five for completion of that audit. We've been working on the software system conversion, as Ms. Staples mentioned. Also drafted, finalized and posted the R F P for the V D H planning design grant. We will expect to receive responses December second is when that closes after council's direction at the last meeting. I executed the agreement for the website upgrade with Civic Plus. That is also something that will have to be done by January of twenty twenty-five. So part of the reason for canceling the December fifth meeting is we have a lot of end of the year items to catch up on and we are implementing a new system and a new website. So we will be very, very, very busy even in the holiday season. Moving on to infrastructure and utilities, we finalized the lead and copper inventory for submittal. That was submitted to the state in accordance with that E P A guideline and has been posted to our website in accordance with that as well so that the public can go take a look. If they were, if you had an unknown line reported and have since changed your status, you can notify us on that as well. Sean Fortune's done a great job. Got our town hall power washed. Also, we've installed a new dehumidifier so that hopefully the, the issues that we had with moisture in our building doesn't arise again. I also like to thank Vice Mayor Coil and Councilmember Jean Davis on helping with getting curtains for our new bathrooms. So, well, our bathrooms are updated with curtains and rods finally after a very, very long time, both the men's and women's to provide some privacy. So small fixes, but moving along in the right direction. Also led and coordinated well site inspection with V D H and contractors as part of our regulatory process. I'd also like to give Councilmember Voight a huge kudos and shout out for helping with chalking for the Harvest Festival. It was a lot of work. J C was also there with myself and Jackie till about nine thirty the night before the Harvest Festival and we were back at five thirty on Saturday for the Harvest Festival. So I'd like to thank everyone who was a part of that and participated. Very successful Harvest Festival, the most successful Harvest Festival in terms of turnout and numbers in the last five years. We also saw increased revenues, as we mentioned, as it relates to our meals taxes as Ms. Staples mentioned. And we also collaborating, coordinated with our business owners on, on Main Street to have a layout, working with our B G V A group as well as other participants to really ensure that all our voices were heard and we could present the best event that we could for our tourists, but also residents and visitors as well. So thank you all for that and for your support. And the next event will be December fourteenth, which is our Christmas parade and working, we're working on that as well. So that concludes my report.
And to add to that, we also have a tree lighting, it's Saturday after Thanksgiving, right? What's that date? The thirtieth. All right, it's, that's, do we have a tree lighting ceremonies going on December, November thirtieth? So y'all come on out and enjoy that, please. All right, item number thirteen, Stan Tech update. I guess we have a Bryant Mountjoy that is going to give us an update. Bryant.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, Bryant Mountjoy with Stan Tech, I'm a hydrogeologist. For those of you who don't know me yet, we've been working with the town for a couple of years now on some water supply related issues. Excuse me. One of which is the groundwater withdrawal permits, which we applied for reapplication, we've submitted reapplication for. And also water quality related to radiologicals in the town's groundwater wells. So you can flip to the next slide, please. So we'll go through relatively quickly some updates related to a grant that the town has received from the Virginia Department of Health to help with some water quality evaluations and go over what the next steps are there. And we can also talk about the groundwater draw permits, where we are with that, some conditions that will be coming up with that new permit. And yeah, next slide, please. So water quality. So elevated gross alpha radiation activity became an issue in the town's wells since about twenty twenty-three. There was a little bit of, you know, many years back, there are some exceedances of the EPA's M C L, but those went away for quite some time and have since returned. And they've stayed elevated since twenty twenty-three. So that's something that the Virginia Department of Health has reached out and has, you know, requests the town to make some steps to addressing. It's back in June, we helped with preparation of an action plan, which was submitted to the Virginia Department of Health, outlining the town's intended steps to remediating this issue. That was approved by V D H relatively quickly, so we have our, you know, steps forward. There's obviously, there's always new information that can come up and change the plan, but right now we have a, we have a game plan. Also, town staff worked through that work plan and we had secured a planning and design fund grants from the Virginia Department of Health for forty-five thousand dollars back in August. That was the maximum amount that is awarded under that grant program. So it's a good start to working towards a solution here. So next slide, please. So here's the next steps that have been outlined. So first and foremost, there's a procurement step to be taken. To utilize funds through the Virginia Department of Health, there needs to be a competitive bid process, proposal process, which the town is going through now to utilize that funding and to, you know, continue to utilize grant funding going forwards when possible to help with this issue. The initial steps that we, that was secured under that grant was what's called Packer testing, some water quality analyses. In summary, you know, Packer testing is sampling distinct intervals of a well. So one of the town's wells, which has some of the elevated gross alpha activity, has multiple screens at different elevations. So there's a chance that some of the, that the water quality is better coming from some of those elevations and others. So the purpose of that Packer testing is to help figure out if that is an option, you know, for future wells. Can we construct them differently to avoid this issue or not? So it's, it's an investigation to help answer that question. So like I said, that's, that's part of the grants that was just awarded. So that'll hopefully begin, you know, probably early part of next year, I guess. Next, potential locations for new groundwater sources. So we talked about this in detail a couple of meetings ago, so I won't, I won't go over it all in great detail again, but there's a potential for need for new groundwater sources related to water quality if that Packer testing pans out. And also due to quantity because of some of the permit conditions associated with the new groundwater draw permit, which we should talk about next. There are a couple of locations that India alluded to earlier that V D H has already visited and tentatively approved for new wells. So progress has been made there as well. After that, plan is to search for more funding. You know, this is a long-term, relatively speaking, efforts and not an inexpensive one. So the forty-five thousand's a start, but the hope is to secure additional funding through the Virginia Department of Health and other options going forward. Following that, some well drilling and construction for new wells, additional water quality sampling of those wells. There's a chance that those new wells will have improved water quality over the old ones, but it can't be guaranteed until the wells are in the ground. So some additional sampling will be necessary there. If treatment does still end up needing to be done for the gross alpha, that's where this will come into play. The treatment alternatives analysis is a, you know, stepwise evaluation, trying to figure out what the best option is, most, most effective, most cost-effective remedy, which leads into a preliminary engineering report, construction permitting, and ultimately construction of your new treatments if necessary and tie-in of the new wells into the town's water system. So that was the water quality piece. The second piece I want to update on is the groundwater withdrawal permit. So this was applied for earlier this year and D E Q made what we think is almost record review time in issuing this draft permit. They went really quickly and the draft permit was issued in, on October tenth of this year. The draft permit has annual limits of ninety point seven million gallons per year and monthly limit of eleven point seven eight million gallons per year, which is exactly what was requested. So they're proposing to allocate the full amount that was requested, which is great.
And what was the old permitted limit?
I believe it was sixty-nine million gallons per year. I couldn't tell you the monthly number offhand, but it's a sizable increase. There were some comments that we in the town worked through on that draft permit just to give a little more flexibility for some of the permit conditions, which D E Q accepted. And now we're entering a thirty-day public notice period. So there will be a publication in a local newspaper, I can't recall which one offhand, India, the Star, Freedom Star. So there will be a public notice in there and there'll be a thirty-day public comment period for people to issue comments to D E Q if there are any to be had on the permit. If there were a lot of comments, D E Q will potentially hold a public hearing to discuss it. That's relatively rare for a permit like this, but it can happen. After that's over, it's usually a relatively quick process for D E Q to turn around and issue the final permit. So that graph there is just, just a reminder where we've, how we entered this situation. So the town is projecting some growth in the next few years, next several years. And you're already pretty close to the limits that were in the previous permit. So that's, that's where this started from. There are a handful of new conditions associated with this permit. On this page are the new general conditions, which are conditions that are imposed on all new groundwater withdrawal permits. It's not unique to the town, but it is unique to, it is new to the town. The town's previous permit did not have these conditions. So by the end of year one, there'll be a condition to notify D E Q that there's a leak detection and repair program in place, which is relatively straightforward. The town's been operating their water system for years. It's just a documentation step for the most parts, you know, that the town has a plan for detecting leaks and repairing them in timely manner. The second step by the end of year two is submission of a water audit, which is documentation of an analysis of the amount of water that was pumped out of the town's wells compared to the amount that was used or metered, being sold to customers or hydrants, other metered uses. The purpose of that is to identify water loss. So through leaks or potentially, you know, unmetered, unknown water uses, which should be limited. And, you know, elevated water losses means, you know, it might be worth doing an investigation of, you know, water mains that might need replaced, that sort of thing. The purpose is D E Q wants to make sure that the water is actually being used for a beneficial purpose rather than lost. The third new general condition is a water conservation management plan effectiveness report, which will be due at the end of years five and ten of this permit. This permit has a water conservation management plan associated with it, which has a variety of requirements in there related to taking water conservation measures and promoting water conservation for the town. And this report is a evaluation of what was done in that plan, you know, over the past five years. What seems like it works, you know, did the town have successes in, you know, public relations, you know, some education materials, reducing water loss, that sort of thing. It's just an evaluation of the plan, things that work, things that didn't work and things that can be improved. So there'll be two of those. Please. So here are the special conditions. There are a handful of conditions that are specific to the town's water system. So the conditions have been negotiated. We started out with some more sooner deadlines for these tasks, which the town manager and Stan Tech, we've negotiated down to within the first five years of permit issuance. I believe originally we were looking at within three years. So that's a success there, giving a little more time. Again, these are not inexpensive conditions. So the first one is the abandonment of town well number one. That well is essentially That well is essentially, as far as we know, has been abandoned. It's a record finding mission for the most part. Well Number Four is an active well, which is required to be abandoned, and that is because of the well construction. That well has, without getting too many details, that well has a gravel pack around the outside of the well screens that extends above the aquifer from which it's pulling water, which has the potential to lead to water quality issues with intermingling of water from different aquifers, which is not allowed by DEQ regulations. So there are five years to abandon and replace that well. The third is the raising of pumps in Well Five. And fourth is the same thing, a pump raise and geophysical log in Well One A, which are two of the other existing active wells for the town. Those requirements are associated with the regulation that requires the pump in a well to be set at or above the top of the aquifer which is pulling water. That's a safety measure to prevent dewatering of the aquifer, you know, ensuring its, you know, longevity, sustainability in the long term. Right now, the pumps are significantly below the top of the aquifer. And in doing that, there's a diagram here, which sort of illustrates the issue. When you raise the pump, you get closer to the static water level. So the elevation at which water rises when the well is put in the aquifer, you know, is under pressure. So water comes up to some elevation above your well screens. When you raise that pump, you're decreasing the amounts of what's called drawdown that's available. So when you turn your pump on, the water level draws down to a certain point, which is dependent on a variety of factors. But by reducing that, you essentially reduce the yield of the well, because it's not able, you're not able to draw down the water level as far. So the potential issue there is in raising those pumps, there will be a loss of capacity of Well Number Five and Well Number One A. That, the effect of that is a little bit to be determined, but the hope is with the replacement wells that will be coming for Well Number Four, that it'll be of a higher efficiency and hopefully higher yields than the existing wells, which can make up some of that difference. That said, the, it's fairly likely that another replacement well will be needed to make, to make up that capacity that will be lost from those two pump raises. The geophysical logs associated with those are due to DEQ not having data from when those wells were originally constructed. The geophysical logs are part of what helps DEQ determine where the aquifer top actually is, as far as elevation goes. So right now, the limits that are in the permit are estimates, that'll help confirm exactly where it is. So it's some additional information there. And those logs are required as part of the new well construction process anyways. So if there are new, if there's a new well constructed for Well Four, that was another negotiated condition. If Well Number Five or One A are replaced, we won't need to do logs there. We'll just have to do the geophysical logs at the new well locations. So I think that is the last slide here. There's a lot of sort of technical information, so if there's any questions.
You said something about, in one of the other slides, about doing some experimenting, exploratory on, on water. Was that going in different levels, depths in a well to see if there's a potential alpha, a gross alpha at those levels, or what was that exactly?
Yes, that was the Packer testing, which was part of the grant that was issued by VDH. So the Packer testing, this is talking about Well Four in particular. There are several screen intervals. So your well obtains water through well screens, they're perforated intervals. So this well, I believe, has three different intervals, which are at different elevations within the same aquifer. So the idea is you can put a Packer in, which isolates each of those screens from the rest. So by pumping water out of one screen at a time, you can identify the water quality of those distinct intervals instead of the average of all of them together. So the hope is one of them may have, you know, most of the gross alpha issue. And in constructing a new well, you know, for instance, if most of the gross alpha is coming from the deeper zone, we could avoid that with, you know, a better well constructed and just using the shallower parts of the aquifer.
So that's like putting a plumber's ball in there to expand, to keep the water from here, getting down and on here, moving on up.
Right.
With, with, with that being done at other locations, how has that fared? What's the percentage, you think?
As far as this particular issue related to gross alpha, this is a relatively rare thing, you know, as far as, we found some, we have some examples, you know, further south in my Hanover area, we have some examples in Maryland of this having been an issue. But where exactly this is coming from is still a little bit, it's not a defined source yet. So as far as the process goes of Packer testing and isolating your water quality from different intervals, that's a very proven technology. Whether it answers the question of the gross alpha in the town's wells or not is, you know, completely up in the air until it happens.
So in our town, it's going to be rich, because we're sitting on an uranium mine and rice.
The gross alpha in this case, it's a, is a naturally occurring issue. It has been documented by the Maryland Geological Survey as occurring in some wells up there. So they haven't really identified exactly what the source is yet. It might be from the deeper, you know, the rock underneath, the bedrock underneath the coastal plain sediments. So there's some conjecture there, but it is, it is believed to be a naturally occurring issue.
So, so we're a good, good experiment then, since, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody have anything?
Yeah. So you just talked about having more technical information. Is that stuff that you were going to go over, or is that the material that you have? Slides that are forthcoming, or?
I think I was, I was just alluding to, we talked a lot more last time that was here about the, you know, the hydrogeology and how the wells work as far as capacity goes. You know, we've not done any additional evaluations of water quality yet. We've been working on getting through the permit application, which has just been wrapped up. And then now most of the additional work as far as water quality goes is pending finalizing of that, the VDH grants and the procurement process.
Do you have any other reporting from, you know, feedback from the, the consent order and everything?
I've not heard anything about the consent order personally.
Okay. All right, I'll come back to that in a second. I guess I only got two other parts to talk about here. So with the arranging to extend the deadline for raising the two wells, you know, that's good, but I'm curious of the eventual timeline of everything, because with raising those, it reduces our overall capacity at the same time that we're trying to get awarded greater capacity. So it's kind of, you know, not, doesn't really work all that well together, because we're going to need more ability to pump out. So we're going to need those new wells regardless. But my, my main thing is, I guess with that is, like, you know, I haven't seen anything at all about like any kind of scheduling or where things are in a pipeline coming towards the future with any, you know, forthcoming reports. So that goes back to what I'm talking about as far as like any of that tech information, like, you know, we haven't really gotten it. Not to say that we're all experts, but it would be nice to see some of it. But more importantly, with tonight, we only had like a handful of slides. But I don't know where all that's sourced, is that, I assume, you know, that it's like, you know, stuff that you brought with you. I don't know if that just wasn't available until today, but it's, I would like to request, you know, if possible, that we can get that a little bit sooner, so we could have maybe formulated some more questions coming into this meeting, because this is our first time seeing all this. So if we could get that, you know, potentially in our packets, and I think that was coming from them, so I don't, I don't blame anybody. If it can't happen, it can't happen, but it would be nice to be able to have that. And, you know, don't be afraid to give us some of that more technical information, because, you know, there is a lot that we'd like to see, because this is one of the bigger issues in town. And, and yes, I get, you know, we get a lot of questions on it. I get that we're not the experts, and so you probably don't even want to spread any some of that stuff, but there's stuff that we want to know, we want to be able to like get feedback on and formulate questions to ask you all when you're around. I guess that basically sums it up.
Well, I, I think, I appreciate the, the update on the permitting process, and I think that's what we hired STANTEC to do. I wouldn't, you know, I'm, I'm fine, I'm tracking everything you're saying, but, you know, I'm trusting your expertise. I think the good news is that arbitrary limit that we used to have that was never set by any reason other than it was the first thing the health department ever gave us, and we were at almost 80% of that, so it triggered an increase. They've taken us to 90 million gallons a year. The best thing I've heard tonight is we've got our permit. And so I'm not as worried about the weeds. I appreciate, we got an expert that we've hired to go through the weeds. I appreciate the negotiations to get those five-year windows, because that's going to be huge. And, you know, raising those pumps, you know, we, we just need to drill another well in five years, and then that'll give us, you know, plenty, I think, I think plenty of capacity to fiddle with and raise and study and get the two wells that are going to stay online fine. So I'm just, overall, I'm extremely pleased that, that you guys pushed this thing too fast and that DEQ moved faster than they normally do. And the good thing is, the scare that was put on our community about not having enough water is not there anymore, because we've found out the facts. So I appreciate your work.
Thank you, team effort.
Anybody else before we move on?
I'll just answer Councilwoman Boyd's question as it relates to the consent order action. We did work with them on the corrective action plan and all of the deadlines and milestones we've had to hit to date. We've hit the well site inspection that was due in October, we did. They also know that we're working through different, various funding sources, which is the first part of the grant that, that we've received. We're in that procurement process, so we're working closely with VDH as they are working with us as we're able to obtain funding. So it is a, it is a joint effort that we are collaborating on, but we are communicative with them. We are including all of the notifications that we have to as it relates to any of these water quality issues that have kind of arose back in 2023, prior to most of the staff here being around. We are addressing those, and they are all on our website, and it's posted as, as required by VDH. So just want to make sure that I've heard some things that we are not being transparent, definitely want to hit that head on, that anything as it relates to this has been updated, updated to our website and included in the water bills as, as we've done throughout the process this year. So I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
India, one question that I have, you know, the conditions with the Well Five abandonment and then the raising of the pump levels for One and Five, I mean, are those things that are new or those things that we've known about for a number of years? Because it seems like to me, we've always known Pump Number Four had to be redone, you know, due to construction and the raising of the pump levels is something that we knew we had to do early on. So the, you know, the request of the increase in our permit limits didn't trigger those. Those were things that we already knew about. But I just want to make sure that I'm right in my understanding of that.
Correct. And I don't have the original schedule back with me right now, but I believe Well Four was supposed to be raised by either the end of 25 or 26. So that was something that we, that we worked to negotiate on. Well Number One abandonment, as he mentioned, was more of a, it's more of a record issue. There is no record of that officially being abandoned, so part of the condition, the special condition that they added was, we'll have to either do that or find that documentation. We have not had any luck in finding that documentation, so.
I mean, what happens if you don't find the documentation?
We have to go through the formal abandonment process again, I believe.
So.
Go through the process.
So once the well's abandoned, you can't really re-abandon it. So if it, as long as we know the location of it and do a thorough search of records, you know, DEQ has historically accepted, you know, a written description of, you know, the well's here, here's a photo of it, we believe it was properly abandoned. You know, ideally, there's a record from the well contractor who's done that work. And just one, one clarification here, I think there were two steps of negotiations on those pump, the well abandements and pump raise deadlines. Your dates were correct, 25 and 26 originally, but the other part of that was they were also to be done before issuance of a new permit or before reapplication. So the first negotiation was, let's continue with this past, this reapplication, because we're reapplying for this permit, you know, quickly to try to get additional capacity the town needs. And then again, beyond that, got an extra couple of years.
So where, where was One, Well One, the one that we abandoned? Where physically is it located? Was that the one on Elmore Avenue? I don't think we need to discuss how they did it, but is that the one that had the little building beside Elmore Avenue? No, so the one on.
Four is still there. I think it's over by.
Yeah, because that little piece of, I remember back, you know, 100 years ago, that little, when, that little piece of land, that building that we used to be there was owned by somebody else, like, I'm not, you know, Aqua, not Aqua Virginia, but some, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do have recollect, right, the town that owned it and someone else owned it.
Right, when we shut, when they shut it down, we, I was, we were asking like, well, can we use, is that our land? Can we use that land? And it was like, well, it belongs to, so I think that's probably number one. And that would have been in '07, '08 timeframe.
Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we'll be looking forward to seeing you back for another good report. And thanks for all your hard, your hard work. We really do appreciate it. Okay, now we're moving on to what I see a bunch of people out here for possibility. Public comments. I like to open up public comments at this time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When you come up, please state your name and address, and you can talk about anything you want, except for what's coming up in public hearing. Okay? If you are a public hearing, please wait till public hearing.
Sandra Pelter, 328 North Main Street. I have copies here of what I'm going to speak about. Back in November of '22, the family listed parcels of land 43-A-46 and 43E-2-1 for sale. The realtor saw a discrepancy between B1 and R1 zoning. We had spoken at that time with Ms. Fincham. She said she had corrected the zoning to B1. We assumed it was done. There was nothing we could do about it. Then, again, we addressed the issue back in March. We had two potential buyers. It was still listed in the records as R1. We started the process of trying to find out why, when it should be B1. I've spoken with Commissioner Gamble, Councilman Stork, Councilman Vogt. They all said it should be B1. They do their research, they say, no, it's R1. You have documentation of the dates. And back in March of '20, Ms., the town manager wrote in an email, it was best correspond by email, not phone. I had to personally stop them at a lunch meeting to address it, because I wasn't, I was leaving messages and nobody was answering me back. They finally made a determination that it still was R1, after everybody says it's B1. Fortunately, I found documentation back in May that the original real estate contract where the family bought the property, and it was commercial. Then the determination was made, and the last sentence says, however, upon review of the zoning map, the town has determined that these parcels are B1. Well, if you have a zoning map, why wasn't it determined months ago? Well, this was given to the realtor back on May the 16th by email from J.C. And it said, the last sentence, the zoning administrator, town manager Jacobs, will affirm this determination in response to this email. Again, this is email-driven. She answers it on October the 23rd. We have lost two potential buyers for this commercial property because of what I consider the incompetency of town staff. I mean, the last sentence of his determination is, a zoning map shows we are B1. But yet, for months, and like I said, I can't go back and address Ms. Fincham, she had determined back in her term that it was B1, not R1. back in her term that it was B-one, not R-one. She's not here to defend herself, so I can only move forward with the emails we started in March. And from March to October, it takes a determination from the zoning administrator to say, yes, this is right, when it was at least made back in May. And I had to produce original real estate contracts from the, excuse me, nineteen-nineties. And y'all all know the property. It's called the Old Stuckey's property out on Route three-on-one north. That's all commercial out there. So why is my little piece all of a sudden R-one? And why was it so hard to make those corrections? I just feel like the staff let the family down, their, the job performance wasn't there. I mean, we couldn't call, we have to email them, but yet when you email them, they don't answer. I think it's, I think the family was unjustly served, and I just wanted Council to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address council, public comments?
Good evening. I tend to be a yapper, so I'm gonna stick to my script that I've brought with me. But I just want to thank you guys all for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Jessica Beal, and I live at one-two-seven Sunset Drive. I'm a town resident, a commercial property owner, and a business owner here in town. I do want to insert a little addendum that I've been in business in town for almost ten years, and India and J.C. have been some of the most involved town staff that I've ever dealt with. So I just want to thank you guys for the work that you do. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Bowling Green Economic Partnership to address an exciting initiative that has the potential to significantly benefit our community. It's the partnership between our town and the Virginia Main Street Program. To give a little background information, as many of you may or may not know, the Virginia Main Street Program is a state-run initiative that aims to revitalize historic commercial districts in Virginia by using a preservation-based approach to economic and community development. Virginia Main Street follows the national Main Street approach and is dedicated to revitalizing and promoting our local downtown areas, focusing on economic development, community engagement, and cultural preservation. It's a lot of big words to just say that Virginia Main Street helps small towns like our own continue to grow in a sustainable manner while preserving its historic characteristics. It's a proven organized model for revitalizing historic commercial districts, and we have the incredible opportunity to take advantage of that. I'm here asking the council to sign a resolution in support of a local group that is eager to work with the Virginia Main Street Program. Prior to twenty-twenty, a different group of local community members came together to form the Bowling Green VA Community Alliance, which I think Mayor Gaines had a large part. This group worked towards the common goal of establishing Bowling Green's status as an exploring Main Street group. Exploring is the first tier of the program. They also worked to identify the needs of the town in ways that they could begin to fill the voids. Like many of us experienced, the introduction of COVID-nineteen and the unknowns that it brought put a halt on many of the group's efforts. To no fault of anyone, this resulted in that group becoming inactive. Over this past summer, several people, including myself, began to take interest in ways that we could help continue and to foster the natural growth that's already occurring in the town. After having some conversations and meeting, meetings with those who work for the Virginia Main Street, as well as several meetings with our town manager, with our Town Director of Community Development, and I also had some meetings with Mr. Gaines, it seemed as though this was the right place to get involved. We have an opportunity to pick up where the previous group left off. So collectively, we formed a new group named the Bowling Green Economic Partnership. We're actively working to take the town's Main Street status from exploring to mobilizing. This is the second phase of the program. In order to move to the mobilizing status, we must go through a competitive application process, which includes receiving a resolution of support from our town council. We've already completed all necessary steps to the application, and your support is the last piece to our puzzle. We're eager to pursue this because first and foremost, this partnership empowers our residents. It allows them to take an active role in shaping the future of our downtown area, fostering a sense of ownership and pride. When community members are involved in decision-making, it not only enhances engagement, but also leads to initiatives that truly reflect our unique values and needs. Moreover, participating in the Virginia Main Street Program can have a profound impact on our local economy. By revitalizing our Main Street, we can attract more visitors, increase foot traffic, and stimulate business growth, something that I think we've already seen a lot of over the last few years. Local businesses are the backbone of our economy, and when they thrive, our entire community benefits. This program will provide the resources and guidance necessary to create a vibrant downtown that draws people in and keeps them coming back. Preserving our town's cultural and historical assets is also a key focus of this initiative. Our Main Street is not just a series of buildings, but it tells the story of who we are. By participating in this program, we can ensure that our historical sites are preserved and promoting, enhancing our town's character without losing our identity. I promise I'm almost done. Additionally, this resolution opens the door for collaboration with neighboring towns, some of which have already walked through this process. By working together through the Virginia Main Street Program, we can share best practices, resources, and ideas, leading to a stronger regional network that benefits all of us. We must also consider long-term sustainability of these initiatives. The structured approach provided by the Virginia Main Street Program focuses on building a vibrant community that can thrive for generations. This is not just about our immediate gains, it's about setting a foundation for growth and resilience for generations to come. It's incredibly encouraging to see the community's enthusiasm for revitalizing our Main Street, and we are excited to see the potential that this has. I know your alarm went off, so I promise I'm done. As a kid who grew up just south of Sparta, Bowling Green was always somewhere that we just drove through to get to Fredericksburg, but I've worked tirelessly for the last ten years to change that narrative and to help revive the small town that has so much to offer. I know I'm not alone in this, as each person who's a part of this group that we have formed, as well as many of you, have also contributed in different ways to seeing Bowling Green be a town worth stopping for. I urge this council to show leadership and commitment to our community by signing this resolution. Your support of this initiative would be a great demonstration of your belief that Bowling Green is something special worth working for. Together, I believe that we can continue to pave the way for a brighter future for our Main Street, one that is economically vibrant, culturally rich, and deeply connected to the people it serves. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak for public comment?
That's you, Bonnie. Haven't seen you in a while. How you been? I have been sick. I haven't been here for two months.
Oh, I'm so sorry to hear that. I'm glad you're doing better.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. What can we do for you today?
Bonnie Cannon, South Main Street. And I'd like to express my gratitude to you, Mayor Mark, for your service, and also I congratulate you upcoming Tino Mayor. And congratulations, new council members coming back on board. I have several things I'd like to just bring to y'all's attention tonight, that I'm a safety nut, okay? And I have a lot of issues with safety, that things that's going on in town. First of all, let me backtrack. Ms. Beal, I don't know you.
Bonnie, up front.
We saw a residence on your committee.
Up front, Bonnie, you're using your time up.
Okay, that's all right. I want her to know, I think they need more residents on her committee. I hear all business, but I don't hear nothing much about residents. I know at least three months or more, there have been three streetlights out on South Main Street. And I went to the post office before I came over here, there was one night across the street right over top of the Calvary Baptist sign. That is four. October thirty-first was a busy night in the town of Bowling Green, last Thursday, one week ago tonight. And I saw a lot of things that happened. I was scared. India, perhaps you need to call Dominion Power and get them on board to come and place those streetlights. Businessman Stork has a lot of things with his business. I know one night, I was worried to death. I couldn't even go to sleep. Some people were at your business till ten o'clock, I believe. They were out there on that street, no streetlights. I was scared somebody's gonna fall and break their neck. Because they're right between us and you, it's two out. Then it's one out down there, right between Antioch and Shiloh Church, where that one is out. And that's a dangerous one at the post office too, because a lot of people go there. Also, I noticed things, October thirty-first, people are very disrespectful to the residents of this town, I found. I think y'all need more signage in the town about safety, big yellow signs like you see other places that we don't have. I think maybe that would catch people's attention. And also, I noticed October thirty-first, I was out there a couple times because I got more worried. An eighteen-wheeler briled down through South Main Street, blowing his horn like he wanted everybody to get out of his way. That scared me. It's after dark. We don't need that kind of thing going on in the town when you got all these people. How many people do we think was on the street in Bowling Green on October thirty-first? I bet there were five hundred people on the street. We're blessed somebody didn't get hurt. Chief was there, I saw Chief, I appreciate everything he did. I know he was busy, I appreciate everything he did, he was there, but safety is on my mind, and I'm really scared somebody's gonna get hurt. Because pedestrians, people don't yield to pedestrians. I've had that happen to me a lot of times. People fly through the town, especially out of state tags, they fly through the town. Nobody even stops for pedestrians. I won't even go on the sidewalk with my grandson because I'm scared to, because eighteen-wheelers briling up through there, which brings me to my next point. I would like to see a study done. Can I tell you this?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see a study done, which was talked about many years ago by previous councils, to do a study to have eighteen-wheeler trucks rerouted out of this town. They don't benefit, I don't see where they benefit anything at all, except keep me awake twenty-four-seven, especially logging trucks at three o'clock in the morning. That's their favorite passageway. I had another thing I wanted to say, but I guess I won't say it. I wanted to thank all the businessmen that are here, you guys too. But Bowling Green needs one more thing we don't have, a large sit-down hometown restaurant. And if you go visit Monticello and eat lunch at Missy Tavern next door, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else from public comments? I see none, hear none, officially closing public comments. We will now move on to public hearing. Yes, sir, you have it. Yes, sir, please do. We are at public comment hearing time. I will have staff initiate, and then I'll open it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight for public hearing, we have the short-term rentals and accessory dwelling units ordinance. And just to briefly summarize, this is to regulate and allow short-term rentals as a permitted use in the town, which is essentially Airbnb's, Verbo, that kind of thing. And then the accessory dwelling units came up as part of that discussion because a lot of people want to rent out their accessory dwellings. And the town currently doesn't really have a good way to allow that as a regulatory mechanism, and I'll get into more specifics later on that. Thank you.
Okay, that's, is that all the staff has to, on that? I would now like to officially open public hearing for short-term rentals and accessory dwelling units. So if you have something you would like to speak about on this matter, please come up to the podium, say your name and business, I mean, name and address. Give you approximately three minutes. Anybody? All right, Mickey?
Sure.
Come on, you start.
Hello, everyone. How are you doing this evening? Mickey Tingler, one-on-five North Main Street, Bowling Green. I'll speak in support of the ordinance to allow for the short-term rentals. I think that it's here now anyway, and it's here for the future. It's a great way to drive some economic growth and bring in people from outside the community. So I think that it would be wise to go ahead and support the ordinance and get it on the books and get it rolling. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? See none, hear none, we will close public hearing. All right, moving on to members' comments. Does any member, town council members have any comments they would like to, I know Jeff does, but anybody else?
I'd just like to thank staff and everyone who also participated in Harvest Festival, council members, staff, and residents of the town or merchants. They, everyone in the community put in a lot of hard work for Harvest Festival. I think it was successful, and I look forward to a lot of other Harvest Festivals, bigger and better.
Amen to that. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Jeff, Valerie, John, and David for retaining their seats. I think we've got a good council group here where we are, and now we stay together for another two years. Thank you.
Very good. David, do you have anything?
Only thing I will say regarding the streetlights, and I'll just offer a suggestion, probably we're still doing it, but back in the day, nobody noticed streetlights unless it's a night. And so a lot of our staff doesn't work at night. Dominion Power are, they're very slow about responding. And, you know, we're, we're a small subdivision to them. We're not a big, you know, big locality. So we used to have the police on duty at night. That was one of their jobs. If, when they rode around, they were to intentionally look and, and record and supply to the town staff the next day. It's probably still being done. That was before Chief Cecil, but it's, it's a good way to task that. And then, and then it's on Dominion Power. I mean, then we have to, we're beholden to them to come and do it, Bonnie, but just a suggestion. Just want to add to that. David, when I first got on council, that was one of the things, there was something like twenty-five or twenty-six lights out in town. We had Chief Cecil go out, and he did an inventory of everything. And then, I think it was, somebody in the office at the time, it's no longer Judy, she kept hounding Virginia Power. I mean, she called them like two times a week, and they got out here pretty fast. So, I mean, that, we're still doing it with the police, but it just, it takes somebody to keep hounding them if they won't come right away, like you said.
But if the public got their C's one out and thinks it hasn't been dealt with, there's a number on the pole, in, in a metal staple numbers, all you gotta do is write that number down, it's like HBC twenty-five or whatever, call it in and give it to staff, and that's what Dominion needs to come out and change the light, because we have so many poles, you can tell they're in the street, and they, they don't come out at nighttime. So just give them, call in that number, and, you know, we can take care of it, too. Jeff?
Okay, I'll just do some quick happy stuff. Thanks, everybody that came out, those of you that spoke. You used your three minutes really well. And let's go back, let's see, Harvest Fest, fun. Thank you for everyone for that. Staff did great, you know, it was a busy day, a lot of people, it definitely seemed like some record turnout in, in a few places. It also seemed really kind of a record turnout for Halloween night, and that was a lot of kids and families, and it was really, the weather was really good this time around. It was warm. But, yeah, a little bit warm, but, yeah, it was good, it was a good day. So a couple other upcoming things I'd want to retouch upon, some of the things that were stated earlier, but let me, first date, we have the Veterans Day ceremony coming up on, on the eleventh on Monday at eleven o'clock, right? Eleven o'clock a.m. This is gonna be on the courthouse lawn. And then, you know, shortly after that, you know, end of the month, we have the tree lighting on the Saturday, that was the thirtieth. And that's normally at five, am I correct there? Okay. And then, then lastly, yeah, the parade, fourteenth of December, two p.m. Additionally, there's also gonna be, oh, I forget the name that we're using for it, but, you know, the businesses and everybody are doing some other things, so come early. All of Main Street's gonna be great, the whole morning, and I guess that's probably about all I got. Thanks.
Dan, you have anything? Dean, you have anything? Valerie? I'll strike you do. All right, all right, then we'll move on to new business. We're saying all item number fifteen is regional planning area RPU appointment. Ms. India Adams Jacobs is the town manager. India?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Essentially, DQ has put in a new mandate that any locality that operates its own municipal waterworks has to have an appointment as a part of this regional planning area, representative appointed by December eighth. Our executive director from the Greater Washington Regional Commission, Mr. Chip Boils, notified me of this at our chief administrative officer meeting a couple, I guess, a month ago. And he essentially said the council would have to make an appointment so that we are in compliance with this regulatory requirement. So item before you is to imitate a motion to appoint me as the appointee so that we are in compliance with the requirement.
All right. Do I have anybody wish to make that motion to? All right, Mr. To appoint India? No, no, it's, it's not an ordinance, it's just to appoint India Adams as the regional planning area manager, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
You're on the wrong one. You're on the wrong one.
It's the planning area representative to comply with the DEQ local and regional water supply plan regulation.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. I got a second by Jeff, motion by Gene, a second by Jeff, in a discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries a hundred percent. India, you just keep putting yourself deeper and deeper, ain't you?
I'm on the beach.
What will we do with that? How many hats you got so far? I had another one on.
Next.
Item number sixteen.
Yeah, I think you heard from the BG group, BGP group, part of their application is a requirement to have a resolution of support signed by the mayor, but approved by council, which they will need to finalize the packet which is due, and the application which is due tomorrow. So, before you, you haven't closed that resolution for consideration.
The resolution?
Second.
All right, I got a motion by Dan to approve the resolution for BGEP. And I got a second by Valerie, in a discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Nay. Hearing none, motion carries one hundred percent. All right, now we'll move on to item number seventeen, short-term rental. All right, this is the ordinance that JC's going to talk about. Yes? All right, sir.
Bye, please. All right, so, can we reangle the screen just a tiny bit, sorry. Perfect, all right, thank you all. This is a summary of official actions taken by council and the planning commission. You'll recall that, oh, sorry about that. The council referred the item to planning commission at the June work session, and the only item that was referred was to investigate drafting an ordinance to regulate short-term rentals. The planning commission, at their next meeting, added short-term rentals to their annual work plan for the August to October timeframe, and then, the work began. There were substantive discussions at three meetings of the commission, which ended it, the last discussion was in the October meeting, where a duly notice public hearing was held, and ultimately, the draft was voted for, for a positive recommendation to town council. And now tonight, we already had our public hearing, and now we are in the council discussion phase. So, that was sort of the, the council and commission side, this was more the staff side of the ordinance drafting process, just to give a highlight. The staff conducted a comparative analysis of ordinances from other localities, about ten to fifteen, mostly including towns, but we did look at some counties as well, just to stay apprised of any regulatory trends we may want to implement. Analyze the extent of local authority granted by state code, we'll talk about in a, a slide coming up. Review the town code and the zoning, which includes zoning ordinance to identify any relevant definitions, which are also on an upcoming slide. Then we proposed a draft of the planning commission, incorporated input from planning commission that was given at two or three meetings, and ultimately produced a final draft. And the last step of the drafting was to ensure that the draft aligned with the, with how the town code and the zoning ordinance are actually written at a, at a higher level from, in a sort of more structural things, and then ultimately, legal review. So, just some policy considerations to keep in mind as, as, as you consider this, these, these two items. So, the, the first bullet is about how the global hospitality industry is sort of shifting. Airbnb and Verbo are increasing in popularity, whereas the traditional hotel stay is somewhat declining. So, what you get with ADUs and at the bottom with the increasing density, it would add to the sparse rental market in town, but it does present, if there are additional structures, that would present some other concerns, like stormwater management concerns, but that would all be dealt with at the stand, at the, in the planning process, at the staff level. So, one thing I thought was helpful to, to, to work with the commission on the typical land use impacts of, of short-term rentals, so, to think of it sort of akin to a home occupation permit, essentially, we're allowing something to occur in a residential property that typically wouldn't. So, all we want to do is make sure that that happens in a responsible way that minimizes that impact on adjacent properties and ensuring alignment with a comprehensive plan. So, this is the state code authority to regulate, that's the state code definition of short-term rentals, I want to read it out, but that is the definition that staff has proposed as well. And then there at the bottom is the actual state code language. Essentially, the state code allows localities to require short-term rental operators to register with the locality, and also provides for traditional land use authority as we could regulate any other use. Next slide, please. So, the existing definitions that, that we wanted to highlight, and this is where, you know, it'll become clear why ADUs, accessory dwelling units were brought in. So, there, there's a term in our current zoning ordinance called guest house, and that term appears in the definition next to it for accessory building, comma, accessory use. Now, so, the guest houses actually references as a permitted use, however, there is no definition of guest house, nor are there any use regulations. So, if someone came in and applied to, to construct a guest house, staff would really have no guidance whatsoever in the zoning ordinance or town code, other than just traditional setbacks and, and, and regular things that would apply to any parcel. So, the, the commonality of ADUs being used as STRs plus this very imprecise and undefined term, staff and the planning commission felt that this was a good time to address both of those in tandem. And I also just, I wanted to note that traditional bed and breakfasts are defined, and they are, their regulations are unchanged, and they're regulated differently under our code. So, this is the definition proposed in the, in the draft ordinance for ADUs. And then, we'll get into some use regulations later, but the main use regulation is right there at the bottom, the size restriction. So, what you see there is, the, the minimum is six hundred square feet, and the reason for that, and with the reason it can't be any smaller, is because at that point, it becomes a tiny home, which has completely different regulatory implications. And that came out, I think it was appendix Q, the state, the housing and community development department put out appendix Q to define tiny homes, so we, we didn't want to get into that yet. But so that's why that's the minimum, we can't go any lower without implicating those regs and laws. But then the maximum is, for a accessory dwelling unit, would be fifty percent of the size of the primary structure. And staff thought it was important to go with a proportional limitation there, so that way, you know, it's, it's, it's more equitable applied to, to any property regardless of, of the size of the, of the primary structure. Just the, the, some key features, there's two slides here. Basically, requiring registration, and the way we'll be doing that administratively is through the SCR permitting process, which will be filed concurrently with your business license applications on January first. And of course, as far as obtaining taxes, that would be the transient occupancy tax, which I believe is five percent. And some, some other key features, this is more getting into the, the actual use regs. Requiring an operator or point of contact for emergency scenarios, proposing a permitted use in all zoning districts that permit single-family dwellings, requires a formal address for STR structures, and that those addresses be visible from the street, that's for law enforcement, safety, and for people to be able to find the places if they're a little further down a path. We don't want people driving around neighborhoods knocking on the wrong door all the time. And then also, some enforcement procedures are included. And this is, there's, yeah, if you have any questions, let me know.
Do I have any questions on this?
I have one question. If we do not adopt the ordinance, does that prevent any of those uses from happening?
Jeff?
Generally, the way the zoning ordinance works is a use has to be listed in the ordinance as a, either a by right permitted use or a use that requires a special use permit to be carried out on property. So, if the ordinance is silent on a use, technically, it's not permitted. So, by putting this, creating this use, putting it in the ordinance and having a process for permitting and all that, it makes it a legitimate use under the ordinance. So, you know, the question is, if you did nothing, would the county ever, I mean, would the town enforce a violation over it? I think that could happen at some point if there became problems, and technically, someone's in violation of the ordinance if it's not a permitted use.
Yeah, I just have the accessory dwelling units for me, short-term rental I get. So, accessory dwelling units, they, five houses on a block, all want to build their own little unit in the back of their house, or convert their shed into an accessory dwelling unit. Really have to have a kitchen, you need to have a bed and a living room, that's required. Where would it specify that you need water, you need plumbing, et cetera, going to all of those accessory dwellings? So, are they required to put in, hook up to the main building, main dwelling, to get the accessory dwelling up and running? How would that, I didn't see anything in here that specifies anything like that. Short-term rental is the house, I get that, you know, but if everyone's going to build a shed, and... I'm confused about that.
So, the, the town's definition of dwelling unit, which it would also have to, have to meet, is, means one or more rooms in a dwelling designed for living or sleeping purposes and having one kitchen.
Right.
So, does that?
But if the accessory dwelling unit, here's the main dwelling here, the accessory dwelling is in the yard, three hundred feet behind or whatever, that accessory dwelling unit must have a connection for plumbing, so, sewer water. Does it connect into the main dwelling? Is it required to have a separate meter? That's what I guess I'm confused on for an accessory dwelling unit, as opposed to the short-term rental, which would be the primary dwelling.
The short-term rental could be an ADU.
It could be.
Yeah, that's why ADU got pulled into this.
Got it.
Yeah, I'm just curious about that.
I don't think this ordinance tonight answers those questions. Those are good questions, I'm sure staff could, we can get back to them.
Are you also asking, is there another water and sewer availability fee that would incur, be incurred?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Yeah, I mean, whoever's going to be renting that would, the accessory dwelling, it's a short-term rental, the accessory dwelling is not going to be a permanent rental, so...
It could be.
It could be a permanent.
The accessory dwelling could just be, someone puts an apartment over their garage and their grand father lives in it, so...
That's not interesting.
You could draw a Venn diagram, but there was no definition in the code currently of ADU.
That's my confusion.
But, yeah, so I think it's going to, all the existing building codes and, and coach and, and ordinances requiring, you know, water and sewer service would apply, but again, this ordinance doesn't get in, into that.
Do we need an ordinance to address that later on?
I think that's the homework for staff, and unless JC knows the answer.
We'd have to analyze the town's water and sewer codes and see how that applies and fix it in.
And you'll, you'll, you'll be able to ride around and see several examples, because on either side of me, there's an example of a, like a mother-in-law suite, you know, your elderly parent comes to live with you, so I think we can do that. So, the, one of the things, reasons for doing this too, JC, Jeff, is to capture the transient occupancy tax, right?
Correct.
Good, and which is a great thing.
Yeah, I mean, trying to, to answer that, Valerie, my thought would be, it's like a garage, if I build a garage and I have some plumbing in it, I'm not going to, typically, I'm not going to want to have another meter and pay, I'm just going to connect to my main structure. And, I mean, I, just, hearing you talk about that, I mean, it just makes me think, typically, you would run from that main structure to the accessory, just like electric, I'm probably not going to put an additional electric meter, I'm running everything from my main structure. So, I would think that it wouldn't require it, or wouldn't...
That's, I just want to do it in my head.
Like, it wouldn't be appropriate, but maybe if you have a large property and you can't do that, maybe, and you have to connect, maybe you have to connect again. Yeah, but I, I, I would just think that it would come from the main, just like any other...
Yeah, that's what I figured, I just wanted to visualize it.
Just like at my place in Coach Frye next door, you know, years ago, back in early two thousand, they came to council, or to town and wanted to build in-law suites, but they have their own water and sewer because that's what they were built for, you know, that was under the building code, and, you know, so each one of them have their own water, sewer, electric, cable, all that, so it's, yeah, and I see your point.
I didn't make it in my head, so I can just visualize it. The short-term rentals I get, I mean, that's why I brought it up in June, I just thought it was something we needed to proceed to, and I think this addresses it really well. Cool with that.
Anybody else have anything? Jeff?
One of the things, when it was going through planning commission, that was a, a constant was, you know, whenever constructing something like this, you know, you try to get it as best as you can, and then you iterate when you need to later and you revisit. But on that note, I wanted to run a clarifier through, through you over there, Mr. Gore. As this, if this were to be amended later, how does that affect people that have already started doing it? Because this is like outside of like a granting a specific land use, it's not a special use permit, does this, do people that do something tomorrow, do they become non-conforming, or do they bound by whatever new rules as it's amended?
That's a good question, I think it depends on what the substance of the subsequent ordinance is, you know, so you'd have to look and see what it does, whether it's something that would require immediate compliance potentially, or whether it's something that is in a sense grandfathered as a non-conforming use. Probably would, this just depends, sorry, I have a good answer, probably would become a non-conforming use, which means it's permitted to continue because it was lawful when it was first done, and then, of course, under the non-conforming use law, if the use changes, or if, if, say it's ADU, if it is added on to or altered significantly, that would trigger compliance with the current ordinance. So, so it probably could, could go on as a non-conforming use, most likely in most cases. And, but again, the ordinance itself could address that, if that were a concern. In other words, if you didn't want to create the non-conforming use scenario, if it was a change that, that everyone could comply with going forward, I mean, even retrospectively, that could be part of the ordinance, it just depends on what, what's being done with it.
Well, okay, big extreme example, no, we, we demand that you have a separate water hookup. Well, if everybody starts doing one, they wouldn't be able to as easily do that, because they already have the hookup through the main primary dwelling. But something more light, like say, okay, you can have eight people. Yeah, we revise that, okay, that's too many parties in town, you can only have seven people, like...
Yeah, so, so generally, no one is vested in there's, in, there's no guarantee that zone, anyone's zoning is going to change, is going to stay the same. And so zoning can change, can be a downzoning, so there's certain standards in the law, under the law, as to whether or not that constitutes... So there's certain standards in the law, under the law, as to whether or not that constitutes a constitutional takings. So it can get complicated. But long story short, is no one is typically vested in their zoning classification. So zoning rules can change, and they can apply retroactively. But also, it can also, you can have a use that is vested. So the general use is a STR. An example would be if you change the districts. So if you say, okay, they're allowed in these districts, but not, but in later, you say they're, an ordinance passes that prohibits them in a district where they would be allowed under this ordinance. That would be a typical non-conforming use. So that use could continue because it was valid under this ordinance. The later ordinance would not compel them to stop the use. But if they altered the structure, or if they violated the ordinance, it could be enforced, or they could be held to the current ordinance standard. So that's more typical scenario that's clearly a clear case of non-conforming use.
No, I appreciate that. You gave me an "it's depend, it depends", so I was just picking at you a little bit more, but that's good, thanks.
But yeah, the plumbing hookup, that's something we'd have to think about and look at.
In other words, I'm sorry, Dan.
Well, I just, I want to make a motion to approve the ordinance that's drafted.
I already got a motion by Dan, I got a second by David. Discussion, special provisions, if they were allotted. This doesn't change special provisions, is it? All right, it says there on page 43, 7. It says this in the ordinance too, in the town, it says hosting weddings, reception of the special gatherings is not permitted in all 1, 2, and 3 districts. But if you have a special provision that allows that, this doesn't mean anything to do with that special provision hold because it was permitted by council.
I'm sorry, I'm like, I don't, I'm looking at my phone.
I mean, Mark, you're saying if you already have a special use, or you have permission to do that on your property, does that affect that? I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't either, but I do...
If you have a special use permit, or then that stands on its own. Yeah, thank you, sorry about that.
Any discussion?
Let me double-check one more question with Mr. Gore. Just because I don't have the track changes in front of me. Was there anything substantive from since the planning commission?
No, mainly, so if you saw the track changes, it would look like we did a lot. Really, it was just reorganizing it and putting it into the numbers, putting it into the right part of the county, of the town code. Really, it was all really organizational. Some of it was just grammatical, but none of it was substantive.
It looked kind of different, but it looked kind of the same.
Yeah, that was a good question. It was not, then I think it's probably why staff didn't put the track changes in your package because they weren't substantive.
All right, since this is a pretty big item, we'll do a roll call on this one. Dean, who do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Jeff?
I'm thinking my PC, yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Valerie?
Uh, yeah.
David?
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. Good deal. All right, we are now going for feeding into closed session at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Under new business, and I never know when to interject things that might go...
Go right ahead.
Okay. So I can't help say, I can't, can't say this enough. And I really hope our incoming mayor, and you do a good job at it, but every meeting, we always have public comment, and it's always different people. Sometimes it's the same folks, but you can't say it enough. I don't think you can say it enough so that we appear responsive, but yet do what we're supposed to do. And I just want to address anybody that ever speaks during public comment. We have rules, right? And it's timeframe, limits, and stuff like that. We all, we all know that. And it's always designed, we usually let people talk as long as they want, but we always have to have rules. And the most frustrating rule on my part, and I admonish the new mayor to really remember this every time we have a meeting, is it's hard for me because we get one of our citizens up here, and they talk to us, and they're really expecting an answer. And we have to sit here like dummies because we're not allowed to reply. And Sandy, I know you'll remember this from your time. I hate it because it's such an easy thing. Bonnie, we'll get the police to do the lights. You know, it's so easy to jump right in and say it. But we can't say this enough, Madam Mayor. Every time we tell these people to come up here and speak to us, we have to tell them. You know, we're not going to be able to answer you. But we're listening, and we're making notes, and somewhere in the meeting, if it's appropriate, hopefully, we'll address your concern. And so not, because I think it comes across as disrespectful sometimes to our people that we just sit here and look at you like, mm-hmm, you know. So I just want to, I want to, so I want to come back to that. And specifically, I want to address Ms. Pelter. So you and I talked about this issue, and I know you've spoken with several members. I want to start by saying that our staff is the very best this town has had since I've ever been a part of it. So my 10 years as, 10 years as mayor, we had good people, right? Then I got off for a while, but I can say, they're hardworking, they want to do the right thing. And it's about killed me from custom service standard that we've had to close our office several days a week just to dig ourselves out of the hole that we have found ourselves in. This town had gotten to a point that we, by all rights, should have been nonexistent. We let ourself go down so far that we're now putting a tremendous burden on the great staff that we have. Now, I don't like it. If you call me, I'm calling you right back, unless I'm slam jammed, right? Especially our citizens, because you're our customers. And so I know this issue inside and out. And I know there's been no disrespect meant towards you from our staff. I know, I know so. But I also know they're dealing with a bunch of mess. Some of it was created by previous councils, maybe even back when I was on or before me, previous staff, and they're trying very hard to dig themselves out. The thing about a little small town, you know, we evolved. Our water permit evolved, you know, it just didn't, since beginning of the time, have these levels. Our zoning has evolved. You know, localities used to never have zoning. You want to put a hamburger stand there, you did it. And then it became grandfathered, and then it was the law, you know. So I do know for a fact, in 2008, when we, when we ran water and sewer out on that 301 corridor to encourage growth, to encourage people like your father to be able to sell his property, we went through and we looked at every piece of property out there, and we excluded anything that was residential. Because we said, you know what, that's not fair. If there's a house back there, it's not fair to put them in a special tax district. They're not going to put a hotel on it. So we went through and we excluded everybody that was residential. And we excluded the VFW because we thought that was the right thing to do. Your property was not excluded. You've been taxed ever since then. I know in my heart, I don't trust the county or the town's maps because they're done by people. I wouldn't go buy a piece of property on what I see on the county GIS because it's not exactly right. It's roughly right. So I know in my heart that your land is zoned business, not residential. And I, and I see in your documentation that we've ultimately agreed with you, I think. So I don't know what more you need, but I, what, I'm telling you, these guys will do whatever it takes to get it solid so that you can sell it, so we can get a customer out there to use our water and sewer. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, it's just telling me that I got to do emails, and emails don't answer in three months.
Well, that's never acceptable. That's never acceptable. And that's, in a perfect world, you know, that's not acceptable. But I'm here to tell you, I'm giving them a lot of latitude for a couple more years. If you only knew, Sandy, you were on council. If you only knew the situation this town was in, you'd give everybody a pass and let them do emails. Because you know me, I wouldn't, you know, for me to shut a door on my business so we can get some work done, it would have to be bad. It was bad. So I appreciate your understanding, and I appreciate you putting up with what appears to be no contact. But it's not. It's not. And then we, you know, staff, we got your message. We need to do whatever we need to do to update the map to show what it is, because it is what it is. And it looks like the paper trail you provided says that it is. So we'll just, we'll talk offline, I'll talk with staff, and I apologize if anything we've done has come across as unresponsible. Thank you.
All right, we move on to closed session now. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming tonight. This concludes the public part of our meeting. Council, we'll be back open for public after our closed session. So you're welcome to wait outside until we come back, if you wish to hear. All right, we have a motion for a closed meeting. I move that this meeting reconvenes in a closed meeting for the purpose of a discussion or consultation with legal counsel, staff members, and/or a consultant, consulate pertaining to actual or probable litigation specifically regarding data privacy and security matters pursuant to Virginia Code 212-3711A7. Do I have, did I hear that motion?
Yes, so moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Jeff makes a motion, he got a second by Valerie. All in favor, say aye. We are in closed session. We can take about a 10-minute break.